Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this March 21st, 2023. I'm pleased that we have Pastor Mike Boatfield here with us today for Maglin Baptist Church. He will be bringing our invocation, and that will be followed by the pledge, which I will lead. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
All right, let's pray. Father, we come in the name of Jesus, thanking you for this day, thanking you for this privilege you've given us to live today. It is our responsibility to pray for those that are servants and leaders, elected people that take the responsibility to lead us to the right place. I pray today that you will bless them and encourage them. And Father, I ask that you would give them wisdom. And we know that your word tells us that man's wisdom is foolishness to you, God. But if we will ask you for wisdom, you'll give it to us. And I pray that there'll be wisdom abound in this room today. Father, we count it great privilege to be able to talk to you this morning, know that you love us. I pray your favor and your blessing on this meeting today in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Boatfield. Appreciate you being here. Our meeting is now called to order. I will turn things over to John Peterson, our zoning manager, to walk us through today's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand up and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After that, both parties will be asked to come forward, to be sworn in, so that they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time. It is not a rebuttal process, so you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. During the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. Madam Chair and Board, there is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice. This case will not be heard today. This is resounding case Z-81 of 2022 Prime Properties 9 LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are eight cases on today's printed agenda which have been hailed or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-55 of 2022 Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued by the staff until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-55 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-59 of 2022 Glen Side Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 18th, 2023 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z-59 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-60 of 2022 Branch Acquisition Company. This case was continued by the staff until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-60 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-65 of 2022 Trade Pack Investments LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-65 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-67 of 2022 SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-67 will not be heard today. SLEP 11 of 2022 Glen Side Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 18th, 2023 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so SLEP 11 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-2 of 2023 SWI Investments LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 4th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-2 will not be heard today. And finally, Other Business Item Number 3 of 2023 Mills Veterinary Property and Rehabilitation Center. This case was continued by the staff until the April 18th, 2023 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 3 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your volume off on your phone. When the phone's ringing, it does interfere with the broadcast and the presentation. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution of $250 or more within the last two years to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of the room. And finally, I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this date. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. Madam Chair and Board, I did get two requests for early headcounts before we actually start the consent agenda. So can I get a show of people here who are opposed to Other Business Item Number 10 of 2023 Edington Homeowners Association? Other Business Item Number 10, please stand up and raise your hands for opposed. Let the record show there's six people here opposed. Can I also get a show of people here who are in support of Other Business Item Number 10? Please stand up and raise your hands. Let the record show there's 11 people here in support of Other Business Item Number 10. And finally, can I get a show of people here who are opposed to Other Business Item Number 56 of 2022 Stein Investment Group? Please stand up and raise your hands. Let the record show there's two people here opposed to Other Business Item Number 56. Can I also get a show of people here who are in support of Other Business Item Number 56? Please stand up and raise your hands if you're in support. Let the record show there's five people here in support of Other Business Item Number 56. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for March 21st, 2023. First case on consent is LUP 23 of 2022 Coiman Helado Mazareos Reyes requests a temporary land use permit to allow landscape business and related vehicle parking in Land Lot 626 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of Milford Church Road across from Farmington Drive. The planning commission recommends approval for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant allowed to park two trucks and one trailer inside the fenced area. Number two, applicant allowed to have two employees. Number three, hours of operation to be from 8:00 a.m. until 5:30 p.m. during weekdays, no weekend hours. Number four, employees' parking shall be behind the fenced area only. Number five, no landscape debris or other materials stored or contained on the trucks overnight. Number six, no outdoor storage. And number seven, no chipping or grinding of any landscape materials on site. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 23? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Yes, please go right ahead.
If we could add John to the record that the fence is to be completely installed 45 days from the Board of Commissioners's decision, and the district commissioner to approve a 15-day extension if needed, the district commissioner to approve the final design and material for the fence, and all other staff recommendations and comments not otherwise in conflict.
Got it.
All right. You're welcome. Is that a motion? And we'll... If that's a motion, we'll take a second on that. Do we need to do a motion in a second for her just to add that in?
Yes, that'd be preferable, and also just applicant that would recognize that he's in agreement with that.
Can the applicant for this matter please approach?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michael. I'm representing the applicant.
Hello, Michael. It's a pleasure to meet you. I added additional conditions. Are you amenable to those conditions?
So, one of the first concerns that came up with this was the... was the sites from the streets. So installing the fence was one of the first things that we did. So I don't know if it just needs to be reviewed, but the fence has already been installed around the side of the property.
Oh, it's already been installed?
Yeah, it's already been installed.
John, I thought it wasn't installed.
We presented photos the last time. I don't know if those are still...
Pardon?
We presented photos the last time of street views from...
Okay. Okay. So the fence is already up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Even if you add that as a condition, it should be maintained even if the user of the property changes?
Okay.
That would certainly be agreeable.
Pardon?
I said that would certainly be agreeable.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I will strike that the fence is to be completely installed 45 days from the Board of Commissioners's decision, and replace that with the fence is to be maintained by the current and future property owners. And clerk, also strike district commissioner to approve 15-day extension if needed. And please also strike the district commissioner to approve the final design and material for the fence.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble, I think, has a point of clarification.
Before we second your motion, Commissioner Sheffield, did you say that the fence was only installed along the street side and not the entire property?
We have a... Can we pull up the picture?
Because Commissioner Sheffield, I think your intent was for the entire property to be fenced, and I thought I heard him say it was only the front.
I was told that it wasn't installed yet, so do you have a copy of that clerk or...
The fence is in a U shape, so the main part that you can see is alongside the fence, but it does connect to the house, and then a little portion on the right-hand side of the fence also wraps around.
Because, John, this property is also adjacent to Georgia Power Plant?
Yes, and what's on the screen right now is where the fence is going to go, or where it is, I guess.
So the red area is where the fence is currently. The green areas are where there are access points. So the red and purple and green, that's all fence. Green is where there is... where there is a fence or an access point.
Okay. And to the right of this property, John, is that the Georgia Power?
Yes, so Georgia Power owns the entrance on the right-hand side, and all the fencing on there was built with their consent.
Okay. So again, just for a point of clarity, what I'm seeing here, this entire line is a fenced area with the exception of the green lines, which marks the point of entry?
Yep, exactly.
And are those... are those points also fenced?
Yes, those are doors.
It has a fenced door?
Yeah, those are doors, yeah. The only stipulation was that Georgia Power maintained that that door on the right-hand side stay open, because they have their utility trucks that go in and out of there to access, I guess, part of their property beyond there.
Okay, so where I'm seeing the line to the right, the red and purple, that's on your property?
So on the right-hand side, that is our property.
Okay, so the entire fence is on your property?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
That's fine. Okay. You guys have any questions?
And Bill, you're suggesting we add a motion to add this stipulation, or we can include this when you read the consent agenda?
Well, if... Since what he read was mostly from the PC, I mean, I would suggest that you add this as a... especially after the discussion, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, if you'd like to make a motion. Do I need to repeat all of that?
No, I think Robin, yeah, Robin has it.
Okay, I make a motion to approve LUP 23.
Or to add the stipulation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
As revised.
Yeah, and add stipulations in support and consistent with the planning commissioner recommendations and all other staff recommendations and comments not otherwise in conflict, and that the fence is to be maintained by the current and future property owners.
Thank you. And this suggestion is to revise it, Bill?
Or as she revised.
As revised, okay. I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner?
I just need to submit this to the clerk.
Okay. All right. Are there any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sir, the matter still hasn't... still hasn't finished. You can have a seat. The consent agenda is still uncommitted, and I suggest you stay here.
Okay, next item on consent is Other Business Item Number 9 of 2023, which is to consider a reduction of required lot size for BER revocable trust. The property is located on the east side of Cooper Lake Drive, north of Cooper Lake Road, in Land Lots 621...
John, I'm sorry. Can you come closer to the mic? I can't...
Next on agenda is Other Business Item Number 9 of 2023, which is to consider a reduction of required lot size for BRE revocable trust. The property is located on the east side of Cooper Lake Drive, north of Cooper Lake Road, in Land Lots 621 and 622 of the 17th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, Cobb DOT comments contained in the Other Business packet. Site plan received, and I'm going to change the date, Madam Chair, to February 16th, because I did submit a revised plan that just changed the name on the application. So it's going to be site plan received February 16th, 2023, that shows the proposed lot sizes, existing encroachments, property lines, and setbacks. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 9? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. Are there any additions? Commissioner Gamble?
John, if we can see if anyone is here for OB 11 of 2023.
Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 11 of 2023 McConnell Green Homeowners Association? I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Okay. Other Business Item Number 11 of 2023 is to consider a stipulation amendment from McConnell Green Homeowners Association regarding rezoning applications Z-75 of 2016, located in Land Lots 139, 140, 157 of the 19th District. The property is located on Northwest Corner of Lost Mountain Road and Corner Road, and on the east side of McConnell Road, and on the north side of Pickens Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to this item? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And would you like me to give my proposed staff recommendation? Okay. Staff will recommend this item be approved, subject to, number one, district commissioner to approve the final site plan and landscape plan. Number two, only one shed to be painted in the item with a neutral color to be approved by the district commissioner. Number three, site plan contained in the Other Business packet received February 10th, 2023, the district commissioner approved the final plan. Number four, access for landscaping... pardon me. Number four, access for the landscaping to be allowed through the existing gate on McConnell Road. And number five, all previous conditions not in conflict to remain in effect.
So I'd like to make a motion to add OB 11 of 2023 to the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Commissioners, are there any other additions or changes? Okay, hearing none, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second.
Any questions or suggestions? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Anyone here with matters on the consent agenda? You're free to leave at this time, as the Board of Commissioners did approve it, and that includes, again, LUP 23, Other Business 9, and Other Business Item 11.
Okay, John, whenever you're ready, we can begin.
Okay. Madam Chair and Board, it's my understanding that the applicant for Z-61 is stuck in traffic right now, so could we move on to Z-3? Did it hear our first... be our first case?
Commissioner amenable? Okay.
Okay. Resounding case Z-3 of 2023 Cynthia Jones and Cindy Nash Enterprises LLC requests rezoning from R-20 and PSC to NRC for retail in Land Lot 413 of the 18th District. The property is located on the south side of South Gordon Road, east of Factory Shaw's Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-3?
One.
Two. Two. Let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You can tell us your name, and then you can present your matter.
Cynthia Jones, Cindy Nash Enterprise LLC.
Okay. Thank you. Go right ahead. Can you tell us about this matter or this case?
Yeah, I was applying it for liquor store or a gas station. Yeah, those things I was applying for.
Okay, do you want to provide any more details about that, or that's it? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to hear from those who are opposed now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Opposition, you'll have 10 minutes in total to present your views. If there are more than one person that are here to speak, please just be mindful of time so everyone gets an opportunity to speak.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I co-chair the zoning committee for the Mapleton Improvement Coalition. We are opposed to this plan for this property that involves either a liquor store or a convenience store with fuel sales. We've seen both site plans. It's our understanding from the way things have been filed that the current plan is for a convenience store with fuel sales. We do, though, support the planning... the zoning division's staff recommendation that the property be rezoned to NRC, and we support the planning commission's recommendation for that same approach. The... this is clearly a commercial property. This is clearly a commercial hub of this area, but this property itself is relatively small and too narrow to be adequately... for the uses on it to be adequately buffered from the daycare center on one side and the nonprofit organization on the other. And if the use of this commercial property is as intense as a convenience store, it will also impact negatively the residential properties to the south. The... a convenience store with fuel sales will also involve large trucks bringing gasoline to this property. The property is not wide enough for there to be a decelerate lane to handle that truck traffic or to handle the kind of heavy vehicle traffic that's associated with a convenience store. The site plan, despite it being the second site plan that we've seen, does not show any detail as to where dumpsters would be located, where the detention pond would be located, and those are key elements to this kind of intense development. We do recommend, though, that the property be moved into the NRC category. We think that's reasonable, and we think it also gives us an opportunity for there to be some boundaries set on the future use of this property with that sort of approval. The planning commission adopted the staff recommendation, which had some prohibited uses. We have put forth some additional prohibited uses, both in the slide presentation and in the letter that we previously sent. We would also ask that the final site plan, the final building architecture, come back to this board as another business agenda item, so that the public will also be aware of the final plans for this property when it's built out, because it would not be built out as a convenience store or a liquor store with the prohibitions that have been put in place by the... or recommended by the planning commission. So really, it's a blank slate. It would be a property moved into the NRC category, but without a specific plan for it. We think this two-step approach is a good one. It sends a signal to the property owner and to future property owners and businesses in this area that this is a commercial enterprise. There's a perfectly nice little building on it that until recently has been a church. We think it has a commercial future, and that this gives us the opportunity to put some boundaries around what that future might be, boundaries that are appropriate for a small commercial hub in an overwhelmingly residential area. So we would recommend that you approve this application, but with some very strong conditions in place that limit the wide range of things available in the NRC category, given the neighboring uses of a daycare center and a nonprofit organization, and that the final plans for the project, for the property, come back to the Board of Commissioners with the opportunity for public input in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition that desires to speak regarding this application? Okay, standing down, Commissioner Sheffield? Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I have DOT to come up, please?
Good morning. Ligia Florin, DOT.
Hey, Ligia, thanks for joining us this morning. If you would just provide a little clarification on any additional improvements that might be anticipated if it's not zoned in its grandfather category?
Yes. So based on the new site plan that we received, this use that they're proposing will require a traffic study now, and will require additional improvements such as turning lanes into the property, upgrading the entrances to commercial driveways, and closing possibly the western driveway, because it's too close to the intersection of South Gordon.
Okay. But with your original comments, when the application was originally submitted, that was not included?
That's correct, because the use was...
It wasn't the fuel cells?
Yes, the use was less intense, and it was not proposed in a land disturbance permit.
Right.
It was not proposed into to construct a new building.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification. Does anyone else have questions for DOT or Ligia before?
I don't know the front inch length, but I am familiar with the property. If there was a deceleration lane, is there enough length to include that where the driveways are located? are located?
We will propose that they close the left, the westernmost driveway, and then that will give them a little more room to put the deceleration lane into the easternmost driveway.
Okay. Can we see the prior picture on the screen? Okay. Thank you.
Question, I'm sorry, Leah. Do you propose that deceler lane would be necessary for use other than the proposed use?
Perhaps, yes. It depends on the intensity and what traffic we expect to happen, depending on what the use will be, the proposed use. But for a gas station and a commercial property, then yes.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, that's all.
Just a note to the Commissioner and to Leah. I recently was out with the DOT director, just looking at different projects across the county, and if you look at the intersection of South Gordon and Factory Shaw's, in front of the NRC property directly at the corner, you can see the roadway is a little bit wider, and then it just, it kind of juke in right in front of this property, which is a safety hazard as well. So this could help alleviate that, but I would just suggest that be considered should a deceleration lane be put here, that those two things be coordinated.
And I'm sorry, Chair, where are you looking on the map?
Yes, if you see the NRC, it's a small pink square right there where the cursor is.
Yeah, okay.
You can see right even at the top of the property how the road just protrudes inward, and so it would be odd then to see that protrusion inward, then to see a deceleration come outwards. It would really, to me, I think that road should be softened so you don't see that sharp curve right there. Because right now, drivers are pretty much going straight, and then they have to turn inward very quickly, and it's not.
Oh, I see.
Unless you're familiar with the area, it could be a surprise when you approach it.
The existing taper seems to be too short. It will have to be extended.
Right. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Leah, that's all I have. Was that Ms. Jones or Ms. Nash? I think that was Ms. Nash. Thank you for joining us today and, excuse me, engaging in the zoning process. I support staff's analysis that the proposed use of a convenience store with fuel sales is too intense for the proposed location. Additionally, it would not allow for adequate buffers to the neighboring parcels. But while your proposed use is too intense, there are other uses that would be or are compatible in the NRC zoning category, as staff has recommended, that would be of a better benefit to the community. So I'm hopeful that you will keep the lines of communication open with the members of the community and all civic organizations to solicit feedback on the types of businesses that they would like to see at that location. But unfortunately, again, the convenience store with fuel sales, and I think your original intent was to have a liquor store there, would be entirely too intense for that parcel. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I make a motion to I make a motion to approve Z 32023 to the NRC category, subject to the following. And if we can include, and clerk, I have a list that I can get this to you. If we can include the following prohibited uses to item number two of the planning commission recommendations, and bear with me, because there are several that I'm about to read into the record. Liquor stores or any alcohol sales, adult entertainment, sales of sexually explicit or drug-related paraphernalia, smoke or vape shops, pawn shops and title pawn shops, gold or precious metal dealers, nightclubs, video arcades as a primary use, check cashing establishments, discount sales, taxi dispatching, wholesale-only sales establishments, gun, knife, or weapon sales, shooting ranges, firewood sales, thrift stores, secondhand stores or flea markets, with the final use to be approved by the district commissioner. And also, if we can amend stipulation number four to the planning commission comments to read, that the final site plan and building architecture to be approved by the Board of Commissioners through an other business item. And amend DOT recommendation number three to replace the Ostel Road frontage with South Gordon Road. And all other staff recommendations and comments not otherwise in conflict, including the planning commission comments. And that concludes my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Resoning Case Z 61 of 2022, Green Community Development LLC requests rezoning from R 80 and R 20 to R 15 OSC for a single-family subdivision in Land Lots 27, 28 of the 17th District and Land Lot 999 of the 19th District. Property is located on the north side of Bates Road and on the west side of Hicks Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning Case Z 61? That direction shows one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I will be recusing myself from this due to a pending litigation with the applicant individually named. Okay, thank you.
We can just wait a second while he gets that booted up, and then.
Yes, you'll have 10 minutes to present your application.
Yes. Thank you. Pardon me?
The timer is on the podium.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you again for good communication. I mean, improvement is great, but 285 and 400 when there's an accident is impossible. So we'll have to get it fixed like good Cobb County, 75 to 85.
You may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Christopher Hunt, real person and artificial person for Green Community Development, per affidavit to the owner, both authorized to represent and do anything that's required. And my family has been involved in Cobb County development way back, childhood, Six Flags, Industrial Park, et cetera. Really pro Cobb. I love bragging, and I love everything Cobb does. The previous case was a perfect example. Instead of just trashing a zoning, you wisely worked with it and got it. So I applaud that type of attitude and approach for property owners. You know, there's some constitutional issues that are involved with this for the best and highest use, and if you'll see the zoning, as I'm going to be bringing it forward, this design here is called an OSC 15, and it gives superior setbacks, 200% of what's really required. It's super sustainable. This development, by the time it's finished, will be net negative carbon. That means it's going to have a negative carbon footprint with the homes and everything due to the patented homes that I have, and I'll be explaining that. So if we go to number two and see, this is OSC 15, which is like the, hold on just a second, give me a couple of seconds, because, there we go. Okay, so this is the adjoining subdivision. This property was originally zoned, R 15, and Ms. Cole bought it years ago, and the realtor that she was consulting, she just trusted, for some reason, recommended R 85, and Cobb permitted a non-conforming use of R 85. It should have never been rezoned. She doesn't know, understand why. The affidavit that's in the record states that. She was just trusting somebody. And then the next one would be number three. If you see that currently Cobb County, for some reason, is claiming that it's for parks and recreation in the comprehensive land use plan, I don't know how they can take private property and do that, but nobody wants this. There'll be another photo in the future showing where Cobb County clear-cut an entire 30-foot wide path for, I mean, understandably, sewer, but you can't penalize property owners and then try to take advantage of the land as well. So then we can go to number four, please, and this is the national laws and the state laws that Cobb County, in trying to be sustainable, has made some mistakes that have been pointed out in writing. I want to stay very positive this morning. The OSC needs to be redrafted, but as I've talked to the staff, what we need to do is implement variances to overcome the counterproductive antiquated processes and rules that are actually make it to where it's prohibitive and punitive to try to be sustainable. And you'll see that the variances that I'm asking for are actually only to increase what's required. I'm not asking for any exceptions. We're no denser than anybody around us. We've got the same amount of lots per acre, and, okay, next one. So you see, this is the letter that was to John Pearson that shows, if we scroll down it, the density is lower than the R 15 in the area, especially the new development that's already been approved just literally a stone's throw away. It was an OSC R 15. And then we're exceeding, if you look at the percentages on the right, exceeds code. Any variances that I'm asking for actually exceed the code. It's innovative? Yes. It's been engineer sealed, proven that everything works better, and is in everybody's best interest. Okay, if we can go to the next one, please? And this is where there's a little bit. It can't open. What can? Uh-oh. Okay, well, we're going to have a couple of problems, and I'm sorry. These are photos of H E I C or whatever. Okay, let's leave that one up. That was a photo of the rear, not of the six-foot round pipe that goes underneath Hicks. So if you'll look at one of the objections that the staff has, it was a handwritten, non-professional note saying this is a detention pond. And I know by your experience that if you have a detention pond for a subdivision that's here, then you have a stream, you don't have the detention pond on vacant land on the opposite side of a stream. And if they were trying to claim that the pipe and the road made it a detention pond, you don't have a six-foot box, I mean, a six-foot round hole for all that water to go through. There's no detention pond, and it never has been. But there was a terrible disaster of the worst failed detention pond I've ever seen. As much dirt and more that's in this entire room washed into the stream. The neighbors, when we walked the property, couldn't even find one of the pipes they used to have. It was covered up. They couldn't get anybody to fix it, and this is nothing negative. Cobb was going to charge twice as much as the commercial and put it on their water bills, and they couldn't afford that. And so I came in, and I'm offering to fix it with this engineered plans. I'm waiting to get comments back, just because I try to fix things. If I'm involved and we're working with things, I can fix it for a price that was, they were shocked at the price. I said, I can do it. It's kind of a wash. We'll all work together on this. That's just the way I try to do things. So Green Community Development, we prioritize the community and people with the environment. So there's going to be a few of these don't show up, and then what we have is clear coating by Cobb, is that going to show? Probably not. Just go past that, because I'm getting down to four minutes. Then let's race through eight through 14, if whatever shows, shows. See, this right now is a dump that she, this elderly woman who's owned the property, Ms. Cole, has been actually cited for people using it as a dump. You've got a sign up there. Look at the skid marks of people racing. Kids have been killed on the road. There's been accidents. It's, and that's why I've got traffic calming. And we have right across this, literally right across the street, that Silver Comet Trail. I'm willing to put in at my cost a nice traffic calming pedestrian walkway for our neighborhood to be able to access the Silver Comet Trail. It traffic calms, and there's no reason to have a long sidewalk if you've got the Silver Comet Trail right there. You just add more impervious surface, but that's to be negotiated out. Okay, continue on. So, okay, just, if it gives you a hard time, just forget it. I'm sorry about that. So everything has to be PDF or JPG? Okay, thanks. Okay, so this is just trying to show you right where the zoning signs are, just the amount of trash. This goes up and down. There's mattresses, there's tires, there's, I mean, this is terrible. Okay, and then we'll go to number 15. This is where it says, let's make it affordable. This is living homes. Let's talk about Heartcraft for a second. You start scrolling through the pictures while I'm talking. Heartcraft Homes have patents. I turned down $10 million from venture capitalists at Georgia Tech's ATDC because we have net negative carbon homes because of the trees we save, the oxygen offset, we have exclusive lifetime warranty, fireproof, termite-proof, mold-proof, non-decaying, zero VOC, and carbon reducing. And now with our new hybrid wind solar panel system, we're net positive. Everybody talks about the grid being overloaded, but we're going to be able to make every home a net positive to handle all the electrical vehicles and all the energy and everything in it. This is the Contemporary. They all have the same floor plan, and then they have living rooftop decks on the backside. That's called the Modern, and those are mirrors that look through. So we've got three styles and different colors and variations that people can look at. Those homes are 60 feet wide, 28 feet tall. So you see the Cybertruck that's parked there, that's kind of symbolic of how futuristic they are. And then there is what's called the Contemporary. So you see the living rooftop decks where people can have organic gardens. They have a resistance pool. We pick up more square footage for the people to live in. They don't need the backyards. I give all the privacy of the backyards. This subdivision has had written support by the community adjoining it, and with no opposition except for one woman at the last time, which was a surprise. I don't know if she's the same person, but she was complaining because she wanted deer and the wild animals to come up to her house. What's beautiful about what we're doing is we save all that green space. If she would have communicated beforehand, I could have told her, then you want me here, because someone's going to develop this. You can't penalize the basis of taxpayers by us four no more. You have to have wise development according to your own rules, because who's going to pay for the inflation costs and the rising costs? 100 people can pay for a service a lot better than 10. And so this is affordable housing. It's sustainable housing. It gives the maximum amount of privacy. The fact that we had the adjoining neighbors, and the only reason, and now that I've addressed everything, I want to do, I do want to say that please modify the situations for zonings in two ways. One, allow rebuttal, so there can't be surprises. This system is abused and misused by HOAs and different people, where they say things that I can't even defend. And then the second one is that when somebody makes adjustments and pivots and accommodates, the staff changes the recommendations. I really appreciate this time, and I look forward to you all approving and having shovels for the most sustainable subdivision in America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now hear from opposition. Similar to the applicant, you'll have 10 minutes to present your side.
My name is Pam Yates. I live in the subdivision that's right off of Bates Road. I am not the only person that is opposed to this. There are several of us, however, they work for a living and cannot be at all these meetings. The biggest thing that, my biggest problem with this is it is a green space. It is a nature's habitat. It's a flood plain, and the way it sits right now, in order for them to build anything on that section of Bates Road, they're going to have to bring in tons of fill. There isn't even a spot wide enough to park a car on the side of Bates Road at this point. They will destroy everything that's down there in order to be able to put in 10 houses in two tenths of a mile. It's, it's just not right. Cobb County is losing so many green spaces. Cobb County is losing so many green spaces because somebody wants to make a buck off of it. I'm just, I'm, I am, like I said, I am not the only one opposed to this. Most of the people in our neighborhood, and from what I've read on Nextdoor, most of the people around the area are against it. They just cannot come to these meetings because they have to be at work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else speaking in opposition? I see your hand up to our applicant. I will let the commissioner use her discretion after we close opposition to see if she will bring you back up. All right. I'm not seeing anyone else in opposition, so I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did receive several emails months ago in opposition of the application, as I'm sure some of my colleagues here has had as well. So, they may not be here, but we certainly received their opposition in our inbox. This one is a very unique property, and it was originally zoned as R-15 in 1980, in the 1980s, as a part of a neighboring development, which I think is Concord Station and Ms. Yates. I'm not sure if that's the community that you live in, but that's the community that's adjacent to this subject parcel. So, that was ever built out, and it was rezoned in 1992 as an R-80 for a single-family resident in part, residents in part because of the topography challenges. There are several variance requests to this application. The original submission included 11, and it's been reduced to nine. Whenever there are a number of variances, that signals to me that it's just not the right development for the location. Particularly with this, with the application that sought as an OSC application, some of the variances are in complete contradiction of some of the requirements of the OSC, which further confirms to me that this particular plan may not necessarily be a good plan for that community. But to Mr. Hunt, I have followed the, and watched the planning commissioners' meetings leading up to this point, and I am aware of their recommendation for denial, both staff and the planning commission. But based on your proposal and the uniqueness of the property, if it's built as an OSC, naturally, it would require an approval of variances in order to develop. As I mentioned, the original application was 11 variances, and over the course of the revisions, I believe that there were at least two updated site plans that were submitted for this application. One of the items that I have concern with as well is the former, and Cornelius, if you can put up the site plan for me. Okay, so, to the northwest property, there's an existing home there. If you can kind of hover over that so the audience can follow. Yeah, right there. Well, in between the green space there. Right in there, yeah, yeah. That was identified as a Lot 14, but in an updated site plan, I guess the decision was made to leave that there as a single-family residence. The issue is, there is no ingress or egress for that property if this development is to be developed. Instead, there is a request that the homeowner would access the road through the green space and not on a hardened surface. That's one of the seven variances in which I have an issue with. But some of the others would allow, what the applicant is asking us to consider, is to allow slopes greater than 25%, not to be included in the required open space behind Lots 5, 6, 9, and 10. Cornelius, if you can just hover over those. So, what we're asking is to not consider the 25% slope, which is a requirement of an open space development. Also, we're asked to allow the detention pond for an adjacent subdivision behind six lots to be used as an open space. Now, I've seen several open space applications since I've been seated as commissioner, and I think this is the first time I've been asked to use the detention pond in the calculation for open space. But in that, with the open space, we're asked to consider the open space to be 31% versus the required 35% of the open space. But in allowing these concessions, it gives me hesitation, again, because in part, what we're asking to, to allow goes against the essence of the open space community. So, in reviewing the staff comments, I share concerns about the stormwater effect on the downstream neighbors. I also share concerns about the proposal to reduce the road widths and the utilization of the grass paver systems, which were the fire department comments. But a reduction of the road width and the utilization of grass pavers, it presents a safety challenge for the fire department in terms of the fire truck access to the proposed neighborhood. And it also limits the ability to access the proposed neighborhood with emergency vehicles, which in essence would provide or would present a security concern for the residents of this I do support staff's recommendation. I am of the opinion that the current R-80 zoning best protects the environmentally challenged property, and the proposed use is not in conformity with the parks, recreation, and conservation, future land use category. I support the staff.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir, you're out of order.
I support the staff's assessment. I support.
Sir, sir, please have a seat.
Sorry, excuse me. Yes, if, sir, if this happens again, we'll ask that you be escorted out of the meeting room. I'd like for you to stay, since you are the applicant. The board will have opportunity to discuss the commissioner's comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I'm sorry.
If I had...
Not, not again, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I had questions for the applicant, I would have asked. Again, I support staff's assessment that the property is currently zoned best preserves the goals of the PRC land use designation, which seeks to provide for land dedication to active or passive recreation. And before I make a motion, I will turn it over to my colleagues in the event you guys have any questions.
One moment. Hold the application. I did have a question for Carl with respect to the body of water that goes through it, maybe a stream. I have a question for you with respect to the application.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Hi, Carl. There's a stream that runs through this property here.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a buffer required for that stream?
Typically, yes. On any stream in the county, we have 50-foot buffers.
Okay. I'm just not, this is the applicant's rendering. I'm just not seeing it reflected here to know, is the proposed development and property lines of the lots, are they outside of that buffer?
They're probably outside the buffer. The buffer might be reduced depending on when it was originally platted. If it was platted prior to 2000, then the buffer might only be 25 feet. And that would be verified during plan review.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gambrell.
Another thing on here, Carl, that is not reflected on the site plan we're seeing, there seems to be a sewer easement that goes through this property as well.
Correct.
And again, it wasn't reflected on the site plan we saw, but what is the setback or the easement width on that?
Well, that would normally be a question to Tim Davidson, but, but my knowledge would be, it would probably be anywhere from 10 to 12 feet.
Which is, yeah, because I know it's typically anywhere from 25 to 30.
Outside the, outside.
Outside of that. So, that is another thing that is not being reflected on the site plan for consideration.
And I think I said 10 to 12. It'd be 2 to 12 feet.
Thank you. Yeah, this is six acres of property, and perhaps this is more for you, Commissioner, or for John. This is six acres of property that's allowing one home to be built per the zoning code. Is it because of the stream buffer requirements that...
What happened, Commissioner, I mean, Madam Chair, is in 1992, the current owner of the property rezoned it from R-15 to R-80 for one single-family house, and the board of commissioners put stipulations on it in 1992 that there only be one house on this property because of the environmental sensitivity of the property with the floodplain and the creek going through it.
Yes, Commissioner, yes.
So, John, just for clarification, that homeowner voluntarily applied for the rezoning of their property to the R-80?
They did apply in 1992, rezoned the property to R-80.
Thank you.
It was implied in the presentation that that was a reapplication that was accidental. Is, do we have any record of that?
There's no record, Commissioner, of that comment. You know, we do have a zoning file that shows that the title holder did sign the application, and they did submit it to the board to be heard.
It's a tough piece of property, and the future land use is, what is it, park and conservation use?
Recreation.
Recreation, even though it has the one home on it. Yeah, I don't know what the economical use is, if it's not a public property for parks, recreation, and conservation, what's feasible there, but balance that with the stream being in there, it does look like it's a very difficult property to develop. Yeah, we have another question.
It was also inquired, or was mentioned that there was an email in support. Did you receive any support correspondence related to this application?
Thank you. Commissioner, sir, I'm sorry, we're not asking, excuse me for... Okay, thank you.
This is a political, this is why Babel's a D N X. These people are gonna drive Cobb down and ruin it. If they could ever accomplish what's a 285 and 75, they could have never gotten to Bray Stadium here.
Excuse me, sir, could we ask him to please live...
There's an OSC R-15 of 50 lots on a lake just 1,000 feet away.
Okay. Outside of, excuse me. Are you done with your questions? Okay. Yes, John?
And let's just have the record reflect that the applicant has been removed from the room for not adhering to our standards of decorum.
Thank you, John. Say for these stipulations put on the prior applicant, could this lot have accommodated any other units other than the one?
Just one unit.
Just one still, irrespective of those prior stipulations?
That's correct, because the 92, the 92 stipulations state one house only, this entire property.
Yeah, outside of the stipulations, just looking at it from a code perspective, could it have accommodated two?
If it wasn't zoned R-80, it may support more than one house, but until we see a plan with the easements, the stream buffers, the floodplain, the creek on the plan, it's hard for us to say how many.
Okay. I'm not opposed to your recommendations, or where I perceive you're leaning, Commissioner. It just seems difficult for just one house to be allowable on six acres. It may not be to the magnitude of 11 in light of the challenges with the property, but I'm trying to get to, is there some allowance for additional units based off of just the code itself?
And I'll share also, which I believe Ms. Yates shared in her testimony, there would be an awful, a great deal of raising the land, because if you're familiar, and I know you run on the trails, so you're familiar with this, there is this steep, you know, decline. So, it's almost like the homes would be like on a cliff.
Yes, yes.
Almost. So, this one definitely does not come without its challenges, both in topography and floodplain and the existing stream.
Commissioner Gambrell.
And if I can tag onto that, John, isn't there something in our development standards as far as development on slopes greater than 25%, which is also why that was included in the OSC code?
Yes, that's in the OSC code that, you know, anything over 25% has to be in the open space.
Okay. And so, that's one thing, when we're sitting here looking at these applications, we haven't asked Cornelius to put the topo on here, but it would show, again, this parcel has a lot of challenges to put up.
I think there were four lots that you shared, or beyond that.
I think it was five. Six, from Lot 5 through 10 to be counted as open space.
Very steep. He can't even see the separation of those lines. That says it all. You gotta put that up at the beginning and end of the conversation there.
You would have been accused of that.
Okay. Anything else? You had something else?
Are you ready for me to second your motion?
Oh, okay.
Thank you all for your input. Your opinions are very valued. With that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we deny Z-61 2022.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes for zero with Commissioner Burle abstaining from this matter.
Madam Chair and Board, the next case has a companion special land use permit with it. Would it be of the board's desire to hear both cases together and then make separate motions on both cases? Yes, okay. All right.
Yes. Of course.
Res zoning case Z-4 of 2023, Noble Storage LLC, request rezoning from L R O to N R C for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lot 539 of the 16th District. Property is located on the south side of Freeman Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road, together with S L E P 2 of 2023, Noble Storage LLC, request a special land use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lot 539 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Freeman Road, east of Johnson Ferry Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-4 or S L E P 2? Please stand and raise your hands. 10? Okay, let the record show there's 10 people here opposed to Z-4 and S L E P 2. Is there anyone here in support of rezoning case Z-4 and S L E P 2? Please stand and raise your hands. Let the record show there's no one here except for the applicant in support of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Yes, the applicant is here in support. I'm ready when you are, Madam Chair.
Feel free to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Commissioners, good morning. I'm Adam Rosen with Rosen, Rosen &amp; Riley, and I represent Noble Storage in these two applications for rezoning and special land use permit. I'll tell you a little bit more about... special land use permit. I'll tell you a little bit more about Noble Storage in a little while, but the principal, the founder and CEO, Brad Noble, is here with us today to the extent that he can help with your consideration. I know he'd be happy to do that. So the property subject to this, these applications is 4290 Freeman Road on your screen. I've identified that with a blue star. It is an almost perfect square, almost an acre in size. It is on the south side of Freeman Road there. And just to walk around the property, to the west of the property is a Pike Nurseries, which is at the intersection of Johnson Ferry Road and Freeman Road. Just south of the screen there is Post Oak Tred, and going further north on Johnson Ferry Road and north of our property across from Freeman Road is a mixture of commercial and retail developments that I'll show you a little bit more about here in just a second. And then continuing around the property to the east and south are a few residential developments that we adjourn. To catch us up to today, this application was originally scheduled to be heard in February. After the applicant's meeting, we took some time to consider staff's comments and discussion at that meeting, particularly in consideration of stormwater, of sewer, and we've also provided and will show you some updated architecture that we did not have at the time of that initial staff meeting. And I'll talk a little bit more about those, but I think the short answer is that we were able to figure out a way to deal with getting sewer at Johnson Ferry Road, which would eliminate any disturbance of the residential neighbors surrounding us, because the other alternative would have been through their property, through easements. And then for stormwater, I know Carl was able to speak at the Planning Commission to it, and we can address that further today, but we feel that we've been able to deal with any stormwater concerns and address those in the plan review process. And so we took the time to be able to do that, and that brought us to March where we are today. We appreciate East Cobb Civic and some of the other representatives of the neighborhoods that hosted us for a meeting on a Saturday afternoon a few weeks ago for a professional discussion of the application. And I know that some of those folks are here with us again today. A little bit more about the property. So the intersection of Johnson Ferry Road and Freeman Road, this is the turn at the Pike Nursery in a restaurant use across the street. And then the next intersection up, this is the shopping center that backs up to the view from our property. You can see the Goodyear Automotive and then the retail that's behind there. The back of those buildings you saw on that last screen is our view from Freeman Road. And then if you were to turn around and look back at our property from there, you're looking down Freeman Road away from Johnson Ferry at this view, and that is our property to the right. The undeveloped there looking at the trees that border our property. And then this is the direct view of our property looking at now. So our property is the low-rise office square on the zoning map. And one thing that's important about the zoning in this area, and particularly where this property is on Johnson Ferry Road, as you know, a very commercialized corridor, we've talked a lot about whether this use is appropriate at the edge of a neighborhood activity center, whether the commercial nature is appropriate at the edge. And we believe that this use is, and if you look at what's up and down Johnson Ferry Road here, it's no stranger to see that residential joins commercial because of the nature of Johnson Ferry Road. And so that's shown in the zoning map for today. So Noble Storage is a family business. Brad Noble grew up here in Marietta, a Walton High School graduate. So this is an area that he knows, and an area that they're very interested in being a part of Cobb County and developing in, and have identified this property for that purpose. Our site plan has not changed since it was originally submitted. Think pretty straightforward as far as the design and layout of it. A couple things to point out. As far as ingress and egress, DOT has recommended we would follow the entrance on the insurance point that's closest to Johnson Ferry as a right-in, and then an exit on the south or further east access there so that traffic concerns are minimized. The building has shifted over towards Johnson Ferry, and we're adhering to buffers and setbacks that were set in the 2011 rezoning of this property, which I'll show you here. So a Z-33 of 2011 was an application to rezone to NRC for automotive uses. That was deleted to LRO for professional office use only, and that is the zoning that it has remained since that time, undeveloped. So we're, two things about that. We're adhering to the setbacks and the buffers from that case. We don't need any change to that to be able to develop this site the way that we've proposed. The other point about that that you can see from this, the picture overlaid there is my rough estimation there of what the separation is. Meeting those setbacks and those buffers from the adjoining residential, we're at about a 90 feet of separation. So Commissioner Burrell and the others that were there for that case did a good job in protecting the residential neighbors by inputting those stipulations. We're not asking that we change any of that. The other point about that, though, is since that time, this is what the property has done, has remained undeveloped, has remained unable to be developed or sold, same owner that owns it since 2011. The architecture that's been proposed has been updated. Since originally submitted, we added some additional windows and other features to try to match not only the residential, but also taking into consideration that across the street from us and on one other side of us is retail and commercial uses. So our requirement is to match what the character of the area is, not just the residential, but the neighborhood around us as a whole. And so this is the combination that has been put together for that purpose. We've talked a lot about, you know, the intensity of this use and the appropriate nature of it at this location. I think as a whole, we've come up with an answer to those different considerations in trying to figure out what is the intensity of this use and why is it inappropriate here at this location. If you look at generally the understanding, and this is just one of those studies that are out there about self-storage, you can look at the different things that would make it an intense use. And this particularly points out that a use like this does not use significant electrical, gas, oil, water, sewer, or other resources. A good thing makes it a non-intense use. As far as traffic's concerned, at about a 25% number of the users for us and this site, that would be a few trips a day. That's a good non-intense amount of traffic for a residential area. And then the others on that list, no significant parking, low municipal impacts, no significant environmental impacts, and limited hours of operation. So we're talking about this being an intense use, but if you look at these different factors and consider it's a quiet user, it doesn't create the other more intense uses, intense aspects of uses that you might otherwise see, either even in LRO, particularly in NRC. And then I've also shown you here, going back to 2017, I know there's history prior to that, but it's been raised, the question of how hard has it been to sell or develop, and how much has the owner tried to do that? And I think this just gives you a snapshot of what has been done over the years, showing that status change as active and withdrawn, and price changes. I didn't want to advertise those, but you can see price changes every time those status changes are made. So the activity and the effort has been put in to try to develop this property, not to question the 2011 action that was taken, but to see it over time, that many years later, there's obviously a concern that it has not been able to develop for the zoning that was put in place at that time. That takes away a lot of the considerations that have been discussed as far as concerns for those in the area. The one thing that's left from that particularly or potentially is height. And so I tried to put together some different concepts to see the way that this property sits, the way that the trees surround the property, and the way that it'll actually look from a height perspective. From what's around us, you look at a seven-foot street sign there, you can see that we're wrapped, and the way that this site lays. And that line there I've shown, because this site's going to require significant cutting to get the property down to grade, which means the building will sit lower than what that rise shows you there. And particularly considering the neighbors adjoining us with the concerns of this building towering over them.
Mr. Rosen.
Perspective is actually a little bit different.
Sorry, your time's up.
Thank you. February 27th is a stipulation letter.
You've come to the 10-minute time limit.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Now, considering there are a number of people in opposition, Commissioner, if you do want to give the applicant more time, you can give those in opposition more time. I'll let you determine what you want to do.
I can wrap up in five seconds, and then be-
I just wondered, how many people are planning on speaking on opposition? Two. Minute and five seconds, I'm sorry. One minute.
Okay. The February 27th letter, plus the revised architecture, and then one thing that was discussed at the last meeting was noise. We talked about putting the HVAC units on the roof to help with that. So our request would be that the approval be subject to that letter, the revised architecture that was submitted, and those units being required to be on the roof with some sort of a noise shield for them. And that was something the applicant spoke to and was agreeable to at the last meeting. So thank you for the additional time.
Thank you. With that, we'll hear from opposition. The applicant took about 30 additional seconds. If you'd like to have that added to your time, you're free to use those 30 seconds.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Apologize in advance for my voice, and I'm just recovering from major surgery. My name's Clifford Goodman, and I'm the president for the Breckenridge Neighborhood, which is just about a minute walk from 4290 Freeman Road. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the residents of Alpine Lakes and Byron's Pond. As you know, I submitted a letter objecting to Noble Storage's proposal to rezone 4290 Freeman Road from LRO to NRC and to build a three-story, almost 58,000-square-foot, climate-controlled self-service storage facility. The letter was also signed by residents age 18 and older in Breckenridge, Byron's Pond, and Alpine Lakes. To give you a clear picture of how the residents in the median area feel about Noble Storage's proposal, let me give you some numbers. Breckenridge is a 50-neighborhood home. 96 residents signed the letter. Byron's Pond has 15 homes, 32 residents signed. And Alpine Lakes has 62 homes, 75 residents signed that letter. As you can see, community opposition to Noble Storage's proposal is overwhelming. Why? It's not because the residents are anti-business. We're all working-class people who love the fact that we found a fantastic pocket neighborhood that's safe, yet so close to businesses that give us everything we need. It's not that we oppose any business use for 4290 Freeman Road. The reason we oppose Noble Storage's proposal is simple. You have to draw the line somewhere. Both the requested NRC zoning and the proposed business are completely inappropriate for that specific property for the following reasons. Zoning 4290 Freeman Road to NRC would starkly conflict with Cobb County Code. Section 134-213 states that area-zoned NRC should be at or near an intersection within the center of a neighborhood activity center, as opposed to its edge. The very edge is exactly where 4290 Freeman Road is. Its property lines butt up against homes in two separate residential communities. The language in the county code is there to protect our residential neighborhoods from being negatively impacted by the heavier commercial use areas. That's exactly why the county correctly denied a request by the landowner back in 2011 to rezone the property to NRC and instead zoned it to LRO. Also, a self-service storage facility is not compatible for that location. First of all, county code section 134-213 provides that building height should not exceed that of adjacent buildings. Noble wants to build a three-story, most 58,000-square-foot structure. There are no three-story structures anywhere near 4290 Freeman Road. Again, Noble Storage asked the county to pretend there's no Cobb County Code. Second, Cobb County Code requires anyone who wants to build and operate a climate-controlled self-service storage facility to obtain a special land use permit. Why is that? Because these facilities have a tendency to impact nearby neighborhoods. Frankly, Noble Storage has provided no information to address any of the factors that county is required to take into consideration under section 134-37E, and that's because the facts tell you to deny Noble's request. 4290 Freeman Road is the only business property in the median area with no direct access to Johnson Ferry Road. Freeman Road's a small residential street, and the proposed business will create a substantial increase in traffic, including large vehicles into our neighborhoods, which have a large number of small children who walk, ride their bikes, and play. Furthermore, the intersection of Freeman Road and Johnson Ferry Road has no traffic light and has poor sightlines, which makes it a treacherous place to enter Johnson Ferry Road. Additional non-residential traffic, especially large vehicles, will likely substantially increase commute times and pose a greater risk of vehicle accidents at that intersection. I know that Mr. Rosen has introduced the notion of building HVAC systems on the roof. That was what was stated to the neighborhood when they met with us, I believe it was on February 25th. Mr. Noble didn't provide or couldn't provide, he was asked, but he could not provide any specific details about what sort of noise, you know, HVAC units sufficient to cool an almost 58,000-square-foot storage facility in the southeast would make. One of the neighbors in Alpine Lakes specifically expressed concern about HVAC noise. I'm certain that the type of HVAC units required to cool a facility that big would make a lot of noise. Why would the facility need security lighting? While storage facilities do provide a needed service to communities, the simple fact is that they also attract criminal activity in two ways. One, they're used by criminals to store contrabands such as drugs, instruments of criminal activity such as firearms, and fruits of criminal activity such as stolen property. Two, they're targeted by criminals who steal property being stored there by customers. The fact that the proposed facility would be located on a quiet residential street that's never visited by law enforcement unless they receive the extremely rare call for service would only make this facility more attractive to criminals. We don't want to increase the potential for criminal activity in our neighborhoods. The proposed facility will likely reduce property values. While there isn't much empirical data, one hard fact is that property is worth what someone's willing to pay for it. Given the overwhelming opposition by residents, it's entirely logical that the proposed facility may impact the prospective homeowner's decision to purchase a home in one of our neighborhoods, or how much to pay for a home there. You've seen the pictures, would any one of you choose to live next door to that building? Also, the proposed facility would not provide a unique necessary service to the community. The fact is, there are many other storage facilities within just a short distance. The simple fact is that there is absolutely nothing Noble Storage has presented, or in fact exists, that can justify rejecting your 2011 decision, current county staff recommendations, and the overwhelming outcry of three residential neighborhoods that both the proposed rezoning and storage facility are incompatible with the nature and quality of the residential neighborhoods near 4290 Freeman Road. And finally, the issue of rezoning 4290 Freeman Road to NRC was already addressed and properly decided by the county back in 2011. I know county staff has recommended this proposal be denied for substantially similar reasons. Just asking again, isn't the proper basis for the county to change a prior well-reasoned decision? And that's essentially what's happening here. The only argument Noble Storage appears to really make in favor of zoning the property to NRC this time is that the owner hasn't been able to sell the property as it's currently zoned. This argument fails for a couple of reasons. First, Noble Storage is not- First, Noble Storage is not the appropriate party to even make this argument. Noble should be looking to buy property that's properly zoned to build and operate the type of business it conducts. Secondly, I know Mr. Rosen provided a little screenshot of some marketing activity. I can tell you that the current landowner purchased that property back in, this is all public record, um, yes, ma'am?
Can you pause the time really quickly? I only want to make a note that the two minutes that are, please pause it for, I see it's still running, so, the two minutes that's remaining, that is inclusive for the second speaker as well.
I've worked things out with the other speaker.
Excellent, okay, continue on, please. Your honor, go ahead.
Thank you. I know Mr. Rosen has provided some details on the, on the marketing efforts. I can tell you that the current property owner, according to public records, purchased that property in 2010 for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. There's been sporadic, infrequent efforts to market that property, and I can tell you that the latest list price for that property is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This simply isn't the best location for a piece of commercial real estate. I'm sure that the property would be worth more if it was owned NRC, and people could build whatever they wanted on it, but maximizing the value of one piece of commercial property by ignoring county code, and at the expense of many taxpayers' home values and the quiet enjoyment of their properties and neighborhoods, is not what ought to be contemplated here. The county should not, and hopefully will not, consider negatively impacting a large number of residents by increasing traffic and public safety risks while decreasing property values and people's ability to simply enjoy being at home in order to help one person make the most money possible on a piece of land they bought on the cheap and now seeks to make about three hundred percent profit. In closing, we're not opposed to business or to responsible growth. We're in favor of keeping Cobb County an attractive place to both work and live. In order to keep it a great place to live, we need to preserve the nature and quality of our residential neighborhoods. Please don't do as Noble Storage asks, and ignore the county code that was drafted to specifically protect our quality of life. Please listen to your staff and the residents, and deny Noble's proposals. Thank you.
We'll hear from the next speaker. You'll have thirty seconds in total.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Richard Groom. I am president of East Cobb Civic Association and ECCA manager for Z4 and SLEP2. We support the neighborhood's recommendation for denial of this particular request, and we have submitted to the commission our, our recommendation in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes opposition. Commissioner, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you. Certainly, um, some very interesting points brought up for this particular case, and so would like to cover a few things that were brought up by the applicant, if the applicant can approach. Thank you. You stated that the stormwater considerations have been, there was time allocated, right, the extra month to review the stormwater and sewer components, and you said you came to some type of solution for that? I'm curious on what that, that did not include the nearby homeowners?
Yes, correct. So I think a few things about, is this mine? The, this is my interpretation of, there's an area over here, that the property drains two different ways. The front of the property drains towards Freeman Road. The, the southeastern corner of the property drains towards the residential properties east and south of us. Our site plan, we will include underground storage and detention, and that will be sufficient to keep the, keep the water from running at an excessive rate or an increased rate towards the residential properties. There's been some discussion about DOT's limitation of our ability to discharge towards the street. So taking into account those two considerations, our civil team has told us that they're comfortable that those can be dealt with at plan review, to show that we can deal with the capacity necessary, and so that would be why we felt like we could move forward, knowing that we could at least get through the plan review process without the need for additional easements.
Okay, so basically defer, a deferred solution is what I'm kind of hearing?
Well, I guess that's me not being able to specifically describe all of the actual engineering that would take place, but my understanding is that we will have sufficient capacity in the underground storage to be able to eliminate any additional discharge so that the capacity, so that the, the conditions will remain as they are now, so that we're not having to have additional easements to the residential property or increase in such a way that DOT would say that we're discharging in excess into the right-of-way, which they would not otherwise allow.
Okay. Second question was around, or that came up with regards to opposition is the noise generation. Is that something that you have any detail on? I know you mentioned the shields. Are there any other details related to that?
No, and that, that was, was, was asked about at the, the meeting with them was, well, what is the noise level of, of the HVAC units? And, and, I mean, we don't have a specific number as far as decibels of those units. The planning commission discussion included, could a solution be to put them on the roof so that they're not, say, around the side of the building where they're directly facing towards the residential neighbors? So we, we feel like that solves that problem. If they're on top of our roof, they're not generating noise that's directly going into the residential homes.
Okay. And clarify, I just wanted to clarify, you're still seeking for the same allowable FAR increase as a variance?
Correct, yes, and, and, you know, we've talked about architecture and different things that we can do differently with the size of the property. That's, that's the, the building that it would take to develop, so unfortunately, that's not a number that, that can move, and that's probably part of the reason why the property has remained, just the difficulty of being able to develop it.
Okay. And your, does your proposal, your proposal included a safety plan with regards to this site plan? Lighting, there's mention of concerns around criminal activity?
Yeah, so the stipulation letter includes, you know, conditions on lighting and security lighting. We've shown you a representation from Life Storage, that's a potential partner that your applicant has worked with before, you know, with their history and with their understanding and practice of these operations, that type of security and infrastructure is, is an everyday thing for them. We talked about that at the, the meeting with the community. You know, this is limited, limited access, particularly in, in non-regular business hours, so the concern of drug activity or others happening here is limited to, say, one person bringing in, you know, whatever they're storing there on a limited basis. I don't know that that's, you know, something that's been a, a large concern in this facility, but that's, the focus of theirs, obviously, in running these operations is card access, other ways to limit access, so that that's something that's precluded as much as possible.
Thank you, and those are my only clarification questions related to the application directly, whether any other?
Questions for Adam. On one of the variances, the request is to allow the dumpster area in a location visible from the street or from the public right-of-way, and I don't see that on here. Can you just point to where you're proposing that to be?
Yeah, it's, it's in the front left of the building.
Oh, okay.
In that area there, and that's just another attempt to, to make sure that we can adhere to the setbacks, the buffering that protects the residential side as opposed to putting it anywhere behind the building.
Okay, and my only other question is regarding the three-story building. Would, would all three stories be above grade, or would there be one story below grade?
So there is a story below grade, it's three-story with a basement, and, and the, the variance request is to exceed the height of buildings around us, not to exceed the actual height limitation for LRO, it's still, or NRC would still remain the thirty-five feet, which is the same for LRO.
Okay, but would the entire first floor be below grade, or just partially below grade?
There will be a story below grade and then the three stories.
But it's a total of three stories?
It's a total of four, it would be a total of four with a basement.
Four, okay, all right, all right, thanks.
But that's still three stories.
It's four.
Put your mic on, please.
That's still three stories above ground.
Correct, yes.
And LRO allows two stories.
Right, the, yeah, the, the variance request is under NRC to allow the building to be higher than adjacent buildings, just to clarify that it's not exceeding the actual building height limitation itself, but yes, under LRO, that would be the same, yes.
So you're providing LRO has a thirty-five-foot height limit?
Correct, and we're not exceeding the height limit itself, just that it's higher than adjacent buildings.
Other questions about the application? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then DOT, this was...
Legia, floor, DOT.
Hi there, thank you. There was a, a kind of two notes brought up, and I know that this is not a dead-end street, but do we have any idea of traffic flow down this road? Is it primarily the residents that use this road?
That's my understanding, primarily residents.
Okay. And, kind of think I know the answer to this, but what is the expected increase in traffic flow related to these types of developments?
For this type of development, the traffic, the Institute of Transportation Engineers estimates about eighty-four daily trips additional.
Thank you. Those are my primary questions for DOT. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so I actually have all of the data points that I need at this point, but I will share a little bit on my thoughts here. I certainly appreciate for all of the developers that come to the district to determine what they, whether or not they have a fit in working with the community, working with the civic organizations. That is something that is highly appreciated and certainly necessary. For this particular application, there are some things that are of concern and are inconsistent with our future land use, well, with what this area really needs. And for the LRO designation, that is something that I think was appropriately discussed and looked at for this area, considering its proximity to the residential parcels. The purpose of the LRO was to exist as a step down, and even in consideration that perhaps, looking at this use particularly, it still, the variance on the increase in the FAR is extremely significant. And so with that, I am ready to make a motion, but we'll open up for any other comments or discussion before I make that.
Thank you. When this came in in 2011 for automotive, I see a lot of, a lot of the same folks that were here in opposition, and it was in District Three at that time. So, um, this, this is too intense for the property and the impact to the neighborhoods surrounding it, and it was zoned LRO for a reason, and therefore I cannot support this storage facility here.
And my only comment, Commissioner, is in DOT staff comments, it disloc, labels this as a local road, and as Legia confirmed for us, it's usually accessed through residential. I'm surprised this wasn't specified as a variance, because according to code, the code allows for access on a local road, on a lot, or I'm sorry, here's what code said. Code allows access shall be located on a lot that gains access through a local, non-residential road. So to me, while this is a local road, and it is allowed, it is clearly residential and should not go here. Thank you. And...
Commissioner, just a reminder, we're, we're hearing Z4 as well as SLEP2, so we need to have two separate motions.
Two separate, thank you. Okay, so I will do the first motion and the second motion, so for the first motion, in accordance with reviewing staff comments, listening to plan commission's recommendations, and input from a more residential perspective with regards to our zoning code, I motion to deny this particular applica, this application, Z4.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call of question. The motion carries five zero, thank you.
Same goes for SLEP2, motion to deny SLEP2.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call of question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, come back at ten fifty. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, come back at 10:50. We are going to resume our zoning hearing. Time is 10:52. And our zoning manager will be calling up our next case. Those aren't here, please help in taking your seats. If there are any conversations that need to resume, you can feel free to step outside in the hallway. John?
Okay, next case is resoning case Z6 of 2022, Sovereign Pacific LLC. Request rezoning from GC to LI for storage and parking for light industrial uses in land lots 422 and 423 of the 17th District. Property is located on the southwest side of Atlanta Road, south of Mosley Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z6? Let the director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
You may begin, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Andy Ship, I'm the property owner. I'm here today with my engineer, David Stewart, with Gaskins-Lacraux. He's available if you have any technical questions. As you know, I'm here to request my property be rezoned to light industrial for the construction of a parking lot for uses allowed under the light industrial zoning category, including for landscape companies. In addition to my comments, I would like to share with the commission a flyover video and a site rendering. With the help of Mr. Pope. The property is currently zoned general commercial. Through a zoning code amendment, the zoning, the general commercial category was discontinued. So, all the uses in that category were grandfathered for the use they were at the time of the amendment. So, even though I'm currently zoned general commercial, I can't do anything with my property. So, for me, this is a unique situation. I've never had a property that's, I'm like in zoning purgatory or something, anyway. I'm hoping today to get the right to use my property for an economically viable use, and that's what I'm asking for. Over the last seven years that I've owned this particular property, I've been approached by many potential tenants and buyers. Most have been scared away by the time and expense and expertise required to rezone a property. From this side of the podium, it can be a very intimidating experience. The common element among all of my interested callers is the need for parking, especially from the landscaping community. I understand that the senior planner suggested that I downzoned the property to a tourist service zoning category. For what passes as zoning humor, I've been goose-ing Mrs. Peyton that while we all hope that South Atlanta Road becomes a tourist destination, it looks very industrial to me. The other thing is that tourist service is kind of a light, light industrial, or super-light industrial. And it doesn't allow me to do many of the things that I'm seeking to do, including servicing landscaping companies and allow them to store pine straw, mulch, rock on, on the ground that they need to maintain each of our lawns. For this reason, I would urge the commission to honor my light industrial zoning request. I want to reiterate that my proposed use is compatible with the future land use plan, and I believe it will benefit the surrounding community, and here's why. Today, my vacant lot has been the favorite location of vandals to dump trash. Since I've owned the property, I've had the opportunity to clean up other people's dumps, including roof shingles, tires, and for some reason, toilets has been a popular thing. I'd haul, I've hauled off a total of six 30-yard dumpsters from the site, and I currently employ someone to pick up the trash on a monthly basis. I think it's important to add that the surrounding area has been a focus of redevelopment efforts by both the federal and local governments. The property is in an opportunity zone and an enterprise zone, which are both designated by the governments to encourage economic growth and job creation in historically under-invested areas. My proposed use will support these, the goals of these initiatives by supporting job creators and providing much-needed parking facilities for those companies who wish to service residences and businesses in that area. Mr. Pope? This is just a Google Earth flyover video that I think gives everybody a good flavor of the industrial development in the area. Now, if you guys can ever buy Dobbins, maybe we could put Disney World there and... But anyway, until that time... So, you'll see my site marked with a little red pushpin. Next door to me, to the north, and, well, to the top of the left of the, of the video there, is Boss Welding. They've been there for, I don't know, 35 years. They're zoned general commercial. I think by today's standards, they would widely be viewed as heavy industrial. So, that's the little flyover, and I've also prepared a rendering to show you what I'd like to do. So, this is my proposed use. And this rendering is based on revisions to my staff, to my site plan and staff comments, as well as conditions outlined in my special stipulations letter. It shows the parking lot will have features such as paving, striped parking spaces, fencing, gating, and landscape buffers, which, all of which I've agreed to, no problem with those. These features are intended to address staff concerns regarding any impact of the proposed use on adjacent properties, and ensure that the parking lot is visually appealing and blends in with the surrounding area. I would like to emphasize that the proposed use will not negatively impact nearby neighbors, which the owners of the buildings behind me are my friends. Zoning conditions outlined in my special stipulations letter ensure that the parking lot is used appropriately and does not disturb these residents. I would like to respectfully request that the commission honor the request for light industrial zoning, which is compatible with the future land use map. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before, when it was asked if there was anyone here for opposition, no one raised their hand. I just want to check again, is there anyone here in opposition? All right, seeing that, I'll turn things over to our commissioner, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. I know the applicant applied for LI, and I also know that staff and planning commission are recommending tourist services. I know, Madam Chair, you're familiar with Atlanta Road from when it was in your district as well, but we're trying to get away from industrial, light industrial in that area. And I know the GC category is no longer in use. So, I, I am, I, I support planning, commission, and, and staff's recommendation with planning commission's subject to list. Do I need to read that? John?
Commissioner Burrow, you know, if you like, if your motion is to adopt the planning commission recommendation, then I think you could just state you recommend deletion to TS, subject to the planning commission recommendation, which includes all the staff comments.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay. I would like to make a motion to delete Z6 to TS zoning category and include all planning commission comments and recommendations, including staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Is there a second? Second?
I just have one question. It's a gated lot, are cars permitted to park anytime during the day? Are vehicles permitted to park anytime during the day?
I don't think there are any hours.
There were no hours, and it's my understanding from the last presentation that the gate is an access gate, we have to have a code to get in. Correct, yes, he's shaking, he said yes.
I know this is geared towards vehicles used for landscaping, is what you shared. My only concern is because there is residential, if there's a lot of traffic going in at night and they're sleeping there, they may hear that. With the apartment use, that apartment use is immediately adjacent to this lot. And sir, if you don't mind speaking with somebody?
We, in, in my special stipulations letter, we added that there would be a solid wooden fence against the apartments, and that there would be a 20-foot landscape buffer to try to handle that concern. The nature of the, the nature of the use is such that staff or employees will go in, in the morning, get a work truck, leave their car, go back, work during the day, and then come back at night. So, there may be a situation, but I can't really think of a reason that anybody would need to be there at night. We're going to have lighting, it's, security is a really big deal, which is why we're fencing and gating. Hopefully, nobody's going to be there.
Are you adding additional landscaping?
What, exactly what staff recommended. We're going to have 20-foot landscape buffer in the back and a 10-foot in the front, and then fenced all the way around.
Is that with existing landscaping, or will you be adding any landscaping to what's there?
There is no existing landscaping.
Okay.
It's completely just nothing. Yes, ma'am.
And, and that's in the staff comments?
Yes, ma'am.
The 20-foot landscape buffer and fence, and then a 10-foot in Atlanta Road.
In one of the photographs, it shows some landscape material, and I think you also mentioned that there will be landscape material at the site. Will there also, hold on, will there also be dump trucks there to, it looks like gravel?
Well, that's what, that's the actual, that's, you just hit on the good observation. That's actually the whole nub of the thing. I wanted to do these outdoor bins, that's not allowed in tourist service. So, there, there will be no bins. It's okay to store stuff on trailers in TS, but not on the ground.
Okay.
And so, that's not permitted, that's what I wanted to do.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, how many parking spaces?
There's 21.
21?
21. Yes.
Okay, I don't have any more questions. I know you have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or suggestions? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Madam Chair and Board, I think there's one case where I think some conditions have been crafted. Should you maybe add one more case to the consent agenda? So, if it's okay with the board, I'm going to call this one case, let's see if there's anyone opposed to it.
I'm hearing you, but I'm not listening, I can't. Tell me the case number, John.
OB 48 of 2022, Alva Glass. This is one that's been continued since September. I think some conditions have been proposed that can move this along on consent.
Okay, so there's no one here in opposition?
Well, I'm going to call it right now.
Okay.
Other Business Item Number 48 of 2022 is to consider a reduction of public road frontage for lots 1 and 2, from 75 feet to 47 feet each for Alva Glass. The property is located on the south side of Bullard Road, south of Devonhurst Way, in Land Lot 434 of the 19th District. The applicant is here, is there anyone here opposed to other Business Item Number 48? And that's the applicant and her attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Let the director show there's no one opposed to this case.
Okay, thank you, John.
So, the staff would recommend that the board approve this, subject to the road frontage being reduced to 47 feet for both lots 1 and 2. The site plan revised 121522, 2022, contained in the other business packet, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications, subject to the stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet, subject to the water and sewer comments contained in the other business packet, subject to the fire department comments contained in the other business packet, and applicant to install a 10-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the new house on that property line, in addition to the setback.
I'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditions as John Peterson just read in for the record. But in addition, also add that no future lot splits will be allowed.
Okay, and this is a motion to add this to the consent agenda?
Correct.
With the conditions that were read? All right?
Second?
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. The motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Commissioner. You have the applicant, you're free to stay or you're free to go. It's been passed.
Okay, moving back into the agenda, into temporary land use permits, LUP 6. Antonio Rodriguez requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the county code permits in Land Lots 155, the 17th District. Property is located on the east side of Ostel Circle, southeast of Ostel Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is not here. Is anyone here opposed to LUP 6? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner Sheffield, sometimes we do provide one opportunity for the applicant not to be here, or try to reach out to the applicant. Is that something you?
We can, but you know, he didn't show up either for the planning commission hearing.
Okay.
He was not in attendance. However, there was opposition in attendance, and the PC moved to deny it.
And I'll let you move forward as you desire.
John, before we start, can you, oh, no, I'm sorry, this is, that's my next case, not this one. Well, this one is interesting, because I had an opportunity to view the property at Google Maps, and there's certainly a fair amount of parking available to allow for, to allow for the vehicles. This has come before us because it's a code enforcement, it was a code enforcement violation. But the violation did not include any other violations, other than parking on the street. There was no parking on the grass. It's just unfortunate that the applicant didn't appear today, or at the planning commission meeting, to publicly share reasons for the application request. So I'm just a little torn on this one, because as I mentioned, the driveway is long and wide enough to accommodate four vehicles, and I am particularly sensitive to this application because it is a family of four that resides at this location. And I'm not sure for the reasons that the planning commissioners denied it, other than the applicant not being in attendance.
They did deny it, but they denied it without prejudice. So he could come back within six months, because the planning commission saw the same thing that you saw, that the driveway is like a double-double driveway.
Yeah, and it looks great.
There's not room for, for cars.
Do we know if the applicant required or had the assistance of an interpreter?
I don't know the answer.
That we do not know, okay.
Did we try to contact him today?
We, you know, what we could do is put this case on hold right now and try to contact him.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because there's three other pieces of business that may take.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So let's put this on hold and give the applicant a call.
Thank you.
Moving into the Other Business part of the agenda, first item we're going to consider is?
Commissioner Sheffield, excuse me, Commissioner Gamble, did you want to add something?
We just weren't sure if a motion needed to be made to hold that case since we had started discussion on it.
No, there's no need for that, since we didn't actually take it up at this point in time. The decision was, I understand, as I understood the discussion, was whether we should take it up or not. And it was just a conversation about what happened at the last hearing, which there was a hearing, but it was just for the opposition that appeared, since the applicant didn't appear at that time.
Okay.
All right, moving into Other Business cases, first case we're going to hear is Other Business Item Number 56 of 2022, which is to consider amending the site plan for Stein Investment Group regarding rezoning application 223 of 1988, and rezoning application Z95 of 1990 for property located at the northwest intersection of Shalford Road and Gordy Parkway, in Land Lots 335 and 386 of the 16th District. Earlier, there were two people here opposed, and there was five people here in support. The applicant's representative is present. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Whenever you're ready, Garvis.
Oh, I was looking for the clock that used to be in here. I don't see it.
Is there one on your monitor?
By the way, nicely done, nicely done. The way it incrementally came together, I was really kind of scratching my head, trying to figure it out, but it really.
Yeah, they've done a great job.
Weren't y'all, I mean?
Yeah, you've been here a while, so I'm sure you.
Yeah, I know, but it looks.
Mr. Sams, the clock is on the podium for you to be able to watch.
Do I?
The clock is on the podium for you to watch for your time.
But I see that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Good morning, ladies. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Larkin, and Huff, and have the pleasure of representing Stein Investment Group on behalf of Kings Hawaiian in connection with this application for an Other Business matter, which takes a form, sort of a truncated form of a zoning application, except to the extent that it's not vetted as much as staff typically would, although Mr. Peterson does put together his own, his own analysis, which was available to us on Friday. We appreciate that. I have with me today Mr. Jason Lynn Scott of Stein Investment seated there, and also Ms. Michelle Scheffler, who is the project manager. And Mr. Lynn, Ben, I'm just going to savage his last name, Ben Poppen. Sorry about that. But he's awesome. He's also a Kings Hawaiian. In last fall, 2022, Kings Hawaiian, may seem odd timing to be planning restaurants, or even to thinking in that vein at the time, but they launched plans to open a new restaurant under the general project name of Project Ohana, which is, which is what this one is, is, was called, just as a name in progress, a working name, if you will. The first restaurant for Kings Hawaiian is actually under construction now in the city of Gainesville. Kings Hawaiian has 140 square foot distribution center, so it seemed like the perfect place. Also, from a demographic perspective, it loosely resembles Cobb County area, the city's and Marietta's environs with respect to the type of clientele you're looking for. It's got some extremely unique figures to it and features to it. Quick story. In 1988, Henry Hayes and Larry Thompson put together a 400-plus acre tract of land at the intersection of Shalford Road and Sandy Plains Road. And it was just a masterful, aggressive, in a good way, undertaking, encompassing a mixed-use development. And along with that, they had stipulations and conditions, but more importantly, they had covenants that ran and still do run with the property. One of those covenants was reviewed by the Architectural Control Committee that was set up. Mr. Henry Hayes, who is the chairman of the ACC, is here today. I don't think he plans to or wants to speak, but he's certainly here historically and otherwise for any questions. So that's 34 years ago, and I'll have to give kudos to Henry and his staff, which are voluntary. They do not get paid for what they do, but they have a deep and abiding sense of what they want Cobb County to look at, or look like. Kings Hawaiian, if you haven't seen their commercials, then you just don't watch streaming or TV, but it's incredible bread, at least in my estimation. And so they, in addition to winning Gainesville, they have one here planned for the corner of Gordy and Shalford. And because the uniqueness of the plans, in terms of color palette, in terms of design, it's taken the ACC a little longer to kind of wrap their heads around this. But they've done a good job. The concept, when it started coming out of the ground in the Fulton, excuse me, the Atlanta Business Chronicle and Tomorrow's News Today's, it started counting the likes, the dislikes, the interest. There's been, there's been no, I know these aren't scientific polls, but there's been no expression of any problematic nature. Of course, that site's different than the sites in the county, in the location, different configuration. This site itself consists of a 1.1 acre tract of land. I've told you the intersection it is. All the zoning on this emanated back in 1990, 1988, and 1990. And if you saw the stipulations that are attached to it, it's a good core of a package of paper worth of it. A little bit about Stein, you've heard of them, you heard me speak of them. They do a lot of different type of projects, in fact, contiguous. And to the north of this, they took the theater that was there and converted that to climate-controlled self-service storage facilities, which was an absolutely perfect marriage between the, between the two sites. The Stein has spent, and this is an underestimation, but it's a rough calculation, over $100 million in Cobb County on their developments in the past eight years alone. So they've been successfully garnering and gaining and understanding the voters in Cobb and your constituents and what they want to see. This property is, at least in my way of thinking, in a diverse transitional area. There's no way, 34 years ago, no matter how smart Larry Thompson and Henry Hayes were, to be able to totally envision what would be here, or be prevalent today in terms of architecture and construction materials and sustainability and those type things. But suffice it to say, what we're asking for is a site plan. There's no site plan on this property. It's lane undeveloped for 34 years, but we're asking for a site plan to be approved for the site. This is the subject property, the 1.1 acre tract we're talking about, the intersection of Gordy and Shalford. As you can see, the totality of the property is within a community activity center on the county's future land use map, which contemplates restaurant-type utilization. You can see we have the Carl Harrison Park that's immediately contiguous into our west, and then everything else around it is, for the most part, commercially oriented, as it was anticipated being. And of course, there's extremely nice subdivisions that ring this, I'll call it the Gordy Track development as well. This is a family business, has been for 70 years. They will run this. This will not be franchised. This will be turned over to the family, and the family will run it, just like they have all their others. Now, they've got two, they don't meet this prototype in California, they got this prototype coming out of the ground in Gainesville, as I said. It's a 3,200-square-foot building, as you can see with the site plan right here. It's got an additional covered lanai. Yes, they had to educate me. Lanai is a patio. You can see it out front. It's a little more easier discernible version in terms of the components of the site plan itself. This is going to have 24-hour monitored surveillance. Hours of operation will be 7:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. We prepared a landscape plan that's incorporated really into all the imagery that you're seeing this morning. And this is another view of the restaurant. You can see, if you're looking from the street, straight on in to the project. Explains some of the components of the project itself. Pages apart. There is general detention on the Gordy Track property, so if you don't see detention on a site plan, good reason for that. Detention's been calculated, configured, taken care of. We found that out with the climates that we did a couple of years ago. So there's no stormwater management issues that we know of. We will be entering into a stormwater management agreement with Cobb County, as I think Carl would want us to do. There's some pinch points on the property because of its limitations in terms of size, so we're asking for a variance to encroach. And Jason's got the actual numbers, how encroached into the buffer between the subject property and Carl Vincent Public Park. That is the only variance we are requesting, and we think it meets the spirit and intent of what we're trying to do. I know darn well it meets the spirit and intent of what the neighbors want to see out there because they're telling us that. Now, I've gotten rogue emails that said that they don't like it, it's too much traffic. I get it. I mean, you know, we hear that every day, and I'm not dismissing it, it's not being valid, but I'm just telling you that it can be handled, and we've done so, and we'll be able to do so again. Let me tell you what has been approved by the ACC. They've approved the architectural style and the composition of the building, so what you're looking at now, they've approved that, the ACC has. The ACC has approved the colors that we project. They have approved the roof design and the materials utilized for the roof design. They've approved the retaining wall that you see, and they've approved that mural.
Mr. Sams?
Yes, sir.
Bring your attention back to the clock.
Yes.
Your time's out.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Bill, thank you.
You need to ask for permission for the commissioners of that.
I'll give the district. I found the clock, it's right, it's right here. But.
I'm going to give, hold on, let me give the district commissioner discretion if they want to add more time to the applicant, adding additional time to the, you already have been over, so I just want to give her that.
I'm, 30 seconds to wrap up, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay.
So besides that reduced buffer?
Okay, just hold on, let me let the district commissioner respond.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I didn't respond either.
You're wasting time, you're cutting into your time. I'll allow for, I'll allow for a minute and a minute to go to the opposition in addition to their ten. Okay, thank you.
That's fair enough. I apologize for the lateness in time. The other thing we're waiting for is four or five items that the ACC is still looking at. Just last week, we gave them colors and designs. You know, the county has a definition of how they want installed dumpsters, and it's very specific. So we've given them a colored version of that, and it really exceeds the county's expectations. We've given them paint chips, we've given them rocks, because as you can see, this is seminous in nature. I say rocks, stones, masonry type of matters. So with that being said, we do ask that you approve this as presented to you. And Madam Commissioner, Madam Chairwoman, if you've got any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you, appreciate it. Those in opposition can prepare to speak now. You'll have a total of 1 minute and 11 seconds.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners. I guess I'm the rogue person. My name is Denise Fissell, and I am a 22-year resident of Highland Park. I'm here to represent concerned neighbors in Highland Park, Highland Terrace, and Northampton. My house is within 1,000 feet of the proposed Kings Hawaiian restaurant. While I have watched this area grow and fill in, this growth has brought a tremendous increase in traffic and burden to the area. The proposed restaurant will sit between two Cobb County parks of less than a quarter mile of last, with Lassiter High School, just over a quarter mile. Additionally, the project sits at a dangerous intersection of Shalford Road and Gordy Parkway. This has been the site of many accidents and near misses on a daily basis. I walk the area daily and find the intersection very dangerous to pedestrians, as drivers do not. do not pay attention to anyone except other drivers. Our greatest concern is the traffic into and out of the proposed restaurant. The proposed times of operation for the restaurant are 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., with a request to increase that to 11:00 p.m. This proposes many concerns for early morning traffic, for schoolchildren, and for commuters, as well as other school release, after-school release and activities. The proposed plan is to have a two-lane drive-through to move soccer moms through quickly. That will increase the potential of people being in a rush to get in and out. The second is the entrance from Gordy Parkway into the restaurant. The traffic backs up at all three lanes approaching Shalford Road. The ACC is proposing a no-left turn in or out of this entrance, but that's not going to stop drivers from making an illegal turn. Last is the traffic coming from Sandy Plain-Shalford intersection going west towards Lassiter. This is a three-lane stretch that ends at Gordy Parkway. Drivers use the right lane as a passing lane and try to beat the traffic before the light. This will cause potential accidents as these cars try to merge left as cars are pulling into and out of the restaurant. All other restaurants in this area are contained within a shopping center, meaning you drive into the shopping center and then into the restaurant parking area. This includes the fast food restaurants such as Wendy's, Taco Bell, and Chick-fil-A. OB-56 is the only one that would have direct access from the roadways. DOT is not looking to do a traffic study at this time prior to making this decision. There's also a significant increase in traffic from the newly opened Crunch Fitness at the north end of Gordy Parkway, which has increased the flow and amount of traffic to the stretch of Gordy. We are not opposed to Kings Hawaiian to become part of Cobb County community. However, we feel that the corner they chose creates more danger to our community. A fast food restaurant is too intense for this small piece of property. In 2017, the Board of Commissioners voted down Lidl Grocery on this same property due to traffic and safety issues. We request that Commissioners deny OB-56. We do propose that DOT find a way to reduce the speed on Gordy Parkway and find a solution for the intersection of Gordy and Shalford to make it safer for pedestrians, maybe a flashing light that alerts drivers to pedestrians on the crosswalks. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, and Commissioners. I'm Chris Lindstrom with East Cobb Civic Association and Case Manager for OB-56. ECCA, I do want you to know that ECCA has been in contact with neighborhood HOA's individual neighbors, the DOT, and the ACC. The following issues ECC are particularly interested in that are not covered by, that were not covered by Denise Fissell just now. The biggest issue for us is the 40-foot western buffer along Harrison Park. The applicant would like to reduce the 40-foot buffer filled with trees down to two to three feet in order to add the parking, additional parking, and also two drive-throughs. Today, the buffer is a steep slope. And once reduced to two to three feet, a 15-foot retaining wall will be needed. And to place the needed footings for the wall, the remaining trees in the two-to-three-foot buffer will either be removed or suffer considerable damage. This now eliminates all the trees and the foliage in the original buffer. It's unknown to ECCA how much backfill is needed to bring that backfill up to the same grade as the building that is proposed. The need to eliminate the existing buffer, build a wall, backfill it, and cover it with mostly impervious material is just too much. The existing 40-foot buffer was intentionally designed to delineate between commercial areas from the parkland, both visually and sound-wise. Allowing the removal of the buffer to expand commercial development defeats its purpose. ECCA cannot support the removal of this buffer to allow for the building of a commercial project too large to comply with the restrictions of the site. The landscaping and other issues landscaping along Gordy Parkway and Shalford Road, as part of the agreement made in 2021, it's a simple stipulation, trees along Gordy Parkway and Shalford Road shall remain. Well, now, both the site and the landscape plans of March 1, 2023, shows that two of these established trees will be removed to make room for a couple of more parking places. One tree is on Gordy Parkway and one tree is on the corner of Gordy Parkway and Shalford Road. ECCA cannot support the removal of this stipulation already negotiated by parties in 2021. It's not even two years ago that that stipulation was put in place. These trees should not now be removed in order to fit on this property or on this parcel of land. It's just too small. Other issues that we have is with the proposed nine-foot pineapple structure that's not compatible with the surrounding ACC commercial property. Another is an example of the proposed monument signage is not shown or described. Will this be an electronic sign? What are the dimensions to it? We don't know. ECCA is particularly opposed to Item 1, Page 3 of the 2005-2022 stipulation letter, asking that, quote, "stipulations set forth herein replace and supersede in full any and all prior stipulations and considerations in whatsoever form that are currently," and it goes on. Well, those existing stipulations were negotiated with the community and stated within the SLOP 5 of 2021, specifically July 14, 2021. And ECCA recommends that these stipulations, were not in conflict, remain in effect. Item 2 of Page 3 of the same stipulation letter, October 5, the sentence should read, "The subject property should be developed in conformity to the surrounding area." Please cross out the word "substantial." So our recommendation is to respectfully deny, we recommend, denial of OB-56. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in opposition? There are three minutes remaining. Okay, seeing none, I'll turn things over to the Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Sams, could you come back up? Where is he?
Right here. Oh, he's in the back.
Oh, sweet. Oh, you did miss John. Recommendation.
Oh, yes, thank you, John. We'd love to have your recommendation.
Okay. Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request subject to the following conditions. Number one, 40-foot buffer adjacent to the public park to remain without any structures and intact. Number two, District Commissioner to approve the final site plan and landscape plan. Number three, building architecture to be approved by the District Commissioner after approval by the Architectural Patrol Committee. Number four, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number five, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number six, Cobb Fire Department comments contained in the other business packet.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sams, last week, we had a conversation, and there were several stipulations that I asked about if your client would be willing to agree to with regard to OB-56. Have you had a chance to discuss with them?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. There's a general conversation among the family members in Hawaii in conjunction with our consultants. And we think we can accommodate that with respect to the buffer. But let me correct...
Well, there were several, not just the buffer that I suggested.
I was going to get to those. The pineapple is just that. It's just a pineapple about three feet tall than I am, if not more. It's not illuminated, it's not a sign. It's a destination where people get their photo op taken, if you can imagine having your photo op taken by a nine-foot pineapple. I've never, I've never really realized how important that might be to some people. But as far as taking out what she said is the landscaping, there are two trees that Mr. Hayes desperately wants to say that are original trees. We're not tearing out our stuff. We're taking out six pine trees out of that buffer, six pine trees. And to put it back, in order to have those trees that are, eh, count on their last legs according to the harvest lived, we're putting in two Schumard Oaks, 11 Borvites, six Magnolias, three Devil Woods, no idea what a Devil Wood is, one elm tree, a mixture of ferns and shrubs. So it's not like taking out and leaving something out. It's like taking something out and putting in something that's complimentary. We had no idea two years ago those trees would live this long. And again, they're on their last legs, but it was very important for Mr. Hayes and his committee that we keep those in there, so we have. So we're trying to strike a balance in talking with them and talking with our clients and talking with the Hawaiian families. That was your question one, and I've forgotten your question two.
Well, I had a list of things that I was recommending that be done for me to consider approving this.
Yes, ma'am.
So staff is recommending approval with a couple of them, but, you know, you heard from the opposition, the traffic is a concern. There's already, the storage facility is there that replaced the movie theaters. And this is an additional acre in front, which is what the applicant's trying to do is too intense for one acre with double drive-through. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic from the park and the school at that corner. The other fast food restaurants, Wendy's, Taco Bell, and Chick-fil-A are in out parcels and shopping centers. So there's plenty of parking and stacking availability. There is none here for dual drive-throughs. So some of, most of my recommendations were, I can't support eliminating a 40-foot buffer next to Cobb County Park.
And like I said, we're...
So that's out of the question. I think we got an email either late yesterday or this morning from Mr. Hayes with approval of the dumpster enclosure, so that's off the table. But there are other things, the mural and the pineapple and the other things, landscaping that the Architectural Control Committee has not agreed to. And I'm going by their recommendation. The traffic, I'm recommending a write-out only on to Shalford because of the...
Ms. White, do you suggest...
...close proximity to the signal there.
Sure.
And also a write-in, write-out on Gordy. No left-out to the neighborhoods.
Well, it's in the staff rec, so we're fine with that.
Well, I think staff had a left-out recommended.
The climate-controlled self-service storage facilities generate maybe eight to 12 cars per day. No effect on AMP and peak hours. From traffic circulation internally, that won't be a problem. As far as the traffic maneuverability we see in terms of queuing and stacking, we've actually got empirical records to glean back to other stores, the ones in California, on time of being served, times for waiting, and the time for pickup. And actually, the dual lanes make it much more efficient, make it faster. There's one thing I really, really, really got to emphasize, this is not a fast food restaurant. This is a fast casual. And I know you say, what's the distinction? It's just semantics. In this case, it's not. 50% of our customers prefer to eat inside because of the ambience of it. If you look at some of those photographs, you can see that it is quite delightful on the inside. So it is definitely the definition of a fast casual. It's not where you go to get a fast burger and get the heck out of there.
Well, okay, maybe I shouldn't have used fast food, but I was referred to drive-through.
Yes, ma'am.
But all the other restaurants that have drive-through are in shopping centers and have plenty of parking and stacking. This, coming off of Gordy Parkway or Shalford, turning in, there's nowhere to stack two dual lanes, a dual lane of drive-throughs.
Well, the efficiency...
So I suggested maybe going down to one. But I don't know what, if you have made contact with your clients to see if any of these are acceptable.
I think they are, and the efficiencies of scale. And it's probably information that I had and didn't provide and can to show you that it not only works internally, but it works in order to preclude stacking and queuing. I'm working on one in Jerica's district. It's a Starbucks, runs the same type of situation in terms of internal maneuverability and making certain that we don't stack or queue in either Paper Mill or Johnson Ferry. And I've got the empirical time measurements for that. And I would appreciate it, and I don't know where they are contractually, but I'd appreciate being able to get that information to you, see if they could lop off a couple of feet of the pineapple. I'm not being facetious. I don't know quite what's offensive about it, since it's not a sign. But in order to do that, we've got to look at the streamlined nature of the dual lanes because it's not for over-eagerness or over-asking. It's merely a function of the efficiency of that restaurant. But rather than just missing it or withdrawing it or turning it down out of hand, I would certainly appreciate the opportunity to fully address those items that you've suggested.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Instead of it being rejected, withdrawn, denied out of hand, I'd like the opportunity to be able to address those three items that you talked about.
Well, there's more than three, but I'd be willing to work with you and with the Architectural Control Committee and the neighbors to see what we can do. This has been continued, and I know you've been working with the Architectural Control Committee. I know it's a long process in getting folks' schedules together, but this has been going on since October. So I'll give you an opportunity, one last hurrah try, to, we'll have a meeting with all of us at the table, and I'll address my concerns and neighbors as well and see if we can finalize this.
You have, each Commissioner has her own style. And I would suggest to you that the most appropriate way to do that, maybe to have you and me and my client consult team sit down with the ACC. And then everyone sit down with the public. Not for any lack of transparency, but the ACC has its own function. It really needs to be done kind of outside the ambit of what you guys and I do. So your call, of course, but it just seems like it made more sense.
Well, yeah, because whatever the ACC is recommending is, whether it's final now or not, will be in the recommendation, in the stip letter.
I understand.
I mean, the stipulation. So, but there are other things that they don't control, like the 40-foot buffer and other things, the drive-through.
Right, or the interior of the building, things like that. Yes, ma'am.
So 30 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that enough? Can I ask Mr. Hayes to come up? I don't want to put you on the spot, Henry, but...
Excuse that. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Are you agreeable to holding this for 30 days to work with me and Mr. Sams and...
Sure. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I would like to have one representative from the neighborhoods.
Sure.
Whether that's ECCA or Denise that spoke from... Whether that's ECCA or Denise that spoke from North Hampton and Highland Park and Terrace, maybe her.
Whomever you want to bring would be happy to meet with you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just FYI, Commissioner, we, we've kept the HOA reps informed as we've gone along. Have they seen the activity as rapidly as they want? No, but, but there's been a submittal at least every month to Mr. Hayes and his group. And so we know what they've approved. What we don't know is what they haven't approved. And then putting that together with what you want and need approved, the 30 days will be sufficient.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we hold this with a, a meeting to follow within 30 days from today.
Bring back for a time specific, would be April 14th.
Right.
April zoning hearing.
The April 18th meeting.
April 4th?
18th. 18th.
No, that's planning, not planning commission.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Oh, the 18th, I thought you said April 8th. Okay, yes. That would be my motion.
Hey, I'll second. There any discussion? Call the question. Okay, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Commissioners, we have three more items, and I would suggest we go through this, but we spent at least 30 minutes, if not more, on that last item, which means we could be here for another 90 minutes and, okay, I have agenda, or excuse me, other business item 10, 11, and 12. Okay, thank you, so that's two items. Okay, so what I'm, what I ask the commissioners is, do you want to break, or do you want to just power through these next three items? Two or three?
I said I'm open to powering.
Okay, if we power through, I just asked for a nine, yes, please let's take a break until noon, and we'll come back and hear the next matters. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. We have a few more matters to address before we adjourn today. Before we get back into our other business cases, I believe we have an update with respect to a prior case.
Yes, Madam Chair. We were able to connect with the applicant for LUP 6, and he is at work and didn't have the opportunity to break away and join us today. So I request that we continue that, this case, and I'm prepared to put that in the form of a motion. I make a motion to continue LUP 6 until the April 14th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry, the 18th, excuse me. April 18th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Thank you, Bill.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, moving back into the other business agenda. Other business item number 10 of 2023 is to consider a stipulation amendment for Edenton Homeowners Association Incorporated regarding rezoning applications, Z57 of 2015 in Landlots 390 and 391 of the 16th District. Property is located at the north intersection of Shalaford Road and Wesley Chapel Road and on the south side of Frick's Road. The applicant's representative was present. Earlier, there are six people here opposed to this and 11 people in support. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
You can begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Patrick Dodson. I represent the Edenton Homeowners Association. I am with the law firm of Jacoma Robertson Dojrell in Buckhead. We are here to discuss OB application item number 10. Just for a little bit of background for you, the Edenton Townhomes community is a townhome community located at 3535 Shalaford Road, Marietta, Landlots 390, 391. This is an over 55 townhome community, which is composed of eight buildings and 26 units. There was a prior OB application applied for several months ago, I think last year, for removal of some trees on the out parcel. This OB application is for specifically a minor modification of a stipulation in the zoning conditions. That condition was that, based upon a landscape plan provided by Canopy Design from May of 2015, that, quote, "Each unit in the development shall have at least one hardwood tree planted in the front yard, a minimum of four-inch caliper." A four-inch caliper tree is what we're here about today. I have been, while I've been retained by the HOA, there are 11, or was it 12 homeowners, 11? 12 homeowners that are here today from Edenton. There are, I believe, five that are here in opposition. However, prior to today, back in September, the association called a meeting. They were discussing the removal of the subject trees, the silver maple trees. There was an agenda item posted, there was a survey posted, and a vote taken. There were 20 homeowners of the 26 that voted for the plan that we're proposing, that plan being a request for this board to change the condition from a requirement of a four-inch caliper tree to a one-inch caliper tree. The current trees are silver maple trees, and they want to replace them with a Japanese maple. What is interesting here is that the conditions of zoning didn't speak to the type of tree, only a four-inch caliper tree. It should also be noted, and this was noted in the staff report, that as a redevelopment site, when this plan was approved by the board, the project was exempt from the normal tree density requirements. So the developer and the attorney, Kevin Moore, that presented the rezoning application for this property stipulated to having this four-inch caliper tree within the community. Now, the problem with this four-inch caliper tree is that it is presenting, here's a picture of the current trees, it is presenting as some of them are decayed and dying, and I believe Mr. Peterson and the commissioner went and observed these trees and did note, in fact, that some of them are deteriorating over time. There are 26 trees in question. These trees have not reached maturity, they will only get larger, and they have a very invasive root structure. This invasive root structure will ultimately cause driveway cracking, sidewalk cracking, and upheaval, foundation damage, as well as sewer and water damage. I don't believe that there were any root barrier protection placed when these trees were planted, so the expectation is that these trees will end up damaging the community property and the homeowner's property and will need to be replaced. They will have to be replaced sooner or later, whether it's today, tomorrow, or in three or four years. And a four-inch caliper tree is an incredibly expensive tree to purchase at a retail price, which is what the association would have to do. They can't go get a wholesale tree because they're not a landscaper. To get to this point, the association didn't just decide unilaterally, we're going to do this. They consulted with their property management company, which is Heritage Property Management. They indicated that these silver maple trees that are existing will have a, one, a high replacement cost because of the four-inch caliper requirement, and that the financial burdens accompanied by the damage to community property and homeowner property will be excessive. They've also spoken with Garrett Bentley, the director of operations at Gibbs Landing, a landscaping company. He said the trees are showing sign of decline, and they are not the correct type of tree to be planted in the fronts or the sides of these houses. I mean, these are very small yards, they're going to be very large trees. They've also discussed this plan and this issue with a certified arborist at Arbor Force Tree Services. He also indicated that the silver maples have an invasive root structure, and that a non-aggressive, smaller-type tree would be a better fit for the design and development of this property. The four-inch caliper is just too large, but the Japanese maple tree does not have an invasive root structure. So again, oh, and the, and Mr. Traywick, Cobb County Extension, also recommended that the Japanese maples would be a good replacement tree for silver maples. So what we have is a minor modification of a zoning condition. This was condition 27D from the original zoning. And it said that each unit shall have at least one hardwood tree planted in the front yard with a, or a minimum of four-inch caliper. We want to change that to one inch. That's the only change. And then, when the HOA is willing and able, they will have the trees removed and replanted at the HOA expense. Now, I understand that there will be an assessment to the homeowners for the removal of these trees and the replanting of a one-inch caliper tree. But we, and here is just a picture, this is Mr. Beechman, he is my contact with the HOA. These are a variety of the Japanese maples that are proposed. Those are one-inch caliper. Mr. Beechman is approximately six feet tall. Taking away the root ball structure or the bucket, those are probably eight-foot-tall trees. And this is what everyone, well, 20 people in the community support, the county supports this, the arborists supports this, landscapers support this, and the HOA management companies support this. Now, here's the reality of what we're looking at. The cost comparison. When the HOA replaces these trees, because they will, this is community property, they will replace these trees. And if they have to replace them with four-inch Japanese maples or other, the four-inch Japanese maples is $90,000 based on the estimate that you have before you. We just got that this past weekend. Now, maybe a different version or type of tree may be cheaper, but a four-inch caliper tree has a root ball on it that's as big and round as my arm. And those are very expensive trees to replace. However, if you replace it with the one-inch Japanese caliper maple, the one-inch caliper maple is $14,640. Now, who's going to bear this cost? Either one. It's not going to be borne by the county, it's not going to be borne by the community, it's going to be borne by the association, which will do an assessment, which everyone in the community will pay 1/26 of whatever bill that is. And I would present that $90,000 is unreasonable and overly burdensome upon the HOA and its And to skip ahead, the code allows for this board to approve of the change of this condition. This is a minor modification, it's listed as a stipulation on the agenda. It's a minor modification, which the county, this board, can approve, which would give the zoning director or district manager the authority to change this condition. The Edenton Homeowners Association is requesting that the board allow for a change of this zoning condition from a four-inch caliper tree to a one-inch caliper tree. I also have a certified copy of the code of ordinances that I'd like to also put in the record if I could. Thank you.
Thank you. Those who are here in opposition, you'll have a total of 10 minutes to address the board.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and the board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk. I want to, I don't have a fancy PowerPoint, but I'm going to share with you the people that were involved in putting together our opposition. These are people who are a part of what we did. You can see their resumes, they're not people that haven't been around for a while. In fact, Dan Connors, who's going to speak in a moment, was a past HOA president of Edgewater Cove. Dr. Harvey Kaufman was here. He's been involved in five HOA boards and chaired three. He had a dental appointment and had to walk out. I've been around the block a few times, I'm getting old, but four kids and eight grandchildren, but anyway, life is good. And one of the things to point out is I'm not a lawyer, I'm not with Gibbs, but I do have an engineering degree, and I spent a lot of time in engineering work in my earlier career, particularly with the Air Force and Georgia Power. Bart Gary, who's a co-founder of Freeman Mathis Gary, and he defines himself as a recovering, non-practicing lawyer. And then Joni Nichols, who's up here with us. And we'll be very brief in covering the items of our opposition. One thing I have to say from the very beginning, this is a... Maybe I want to turn it the other way. Turn it the other way. Yeah, please. This is my three-year-old granddaughter, and she's not an engineer, but we covered, this is one of the last units built. As you may notice, this is not a foundation. It's a slab. It's an eight-inch slab with double rebar. And I didn't have time to do any calculations, but the amount of force necessary to push up a slab is astronomical. If a tree can impact that concrete surface, we'll all be dead. So the issue of affecting the foundation is just not accurate. The other thing I'd point out, stated just a second ago, very briefly, we have the best county in the state of Georgia, 159 counties, and we are the best, and thank you for your service. The Cobb County Development Standards defines a tree, and this is something that y'all talk about as a guidance. Tree means any living, self-supporting, woody perennial plant, which normally attains a trunk diameter of at least two inches, not one inch. One inch is not a tree, it's a shrub, and so we take exception to that issue. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joni Nichols, who is a fairly recent neighbor who moved down here and selected Cobb County as the place to be her home, and Edenton is a subdivision. And I'll just show you a picture of what this beautiful subdivision looks like. It is a delightful place to live. We selected this because of what you see right there. You can imagine taking those down and putting a thumb-sized tree in its place and the impact it would have to the ambiance of this location. Mr. Joni?
Good morning. Thank you. New to Georgia, two and a half years ago, I purchased my home on Oakshire Drive in Edenton. Oakshire is a lovely tree-lined street with plenty of trees, also behind my home. Since then, the HOA has removed three maples and two oaks directly behind my home, seriously impacting my privacy, my noise abatement, and my beautiful view. A board member called me to a meeting and indicated that my recent widowhood, that is, my newly quiet home, my sadness and my fear created this situation, not the recent removal of trees. I wholeheartedly challenge this. Now they're aiming for the front trees, destroying a beautiful tree-lined street. I vote an emphatic no. It is obvious to me that the Cobb County government places priority on the aesthetic value of trees. For this, I am grateful. Thank you.
Greetings and good afternoon. I was waiting to say that.
I know, Ryan.
It's no longer good morning. Thank you for your time. I am here as a happy resident of the subdivision. I'm going to spend a couple seconds on two major points, the trees that are there and the trees that are proposed. I've read a lot of the items that was pulled together by the, by the team that started off, and nobody talked about the shape of the tree. The columnar tree that you can see there, or wherever you see it, is designed and selected for that purpose. It goes up, not out. So I think that is a absolutely proper selection of tree. To take that tree out and put a one-inch tree in, my thumb is one inch in diameter. Again, I don't think that would be a, that would be a replacement tree. Heritage, who's quoted in here, they have put in, they have spoke about problems with water and sewer from the, from the roots. That, that happens, but rarely, and usually in homes over 40 years old. Yesterday, I personally went around and inspected every inch of curbing and every inch of street close to the trees to find out what's, what's screwing it up. There are no, there is zero, to my eyes, there is zero visible problem with the currently installed trees. While I applaud the work of my board in all of these efforts, my belief is the work is a little premature. A quarterly or semi-annual inspection of the tree to identify any potential problems, I think is appropriate, and then action could be taken at that time. Now, what tree to put in? To me, the word "one-inch tree" is an oxymoron. I don't understand what a, it may be beautiful this way, but it'll take away the, the architecture of the phone, of the home. It would just, if we, if we do that, we will have effectively no trees left in the Edenton subdivision if we take away and go to one inch. Thank you for your time.
Sir, would you mind stating your name for the record, sir?
I'm sorry?
Would you mind stating your name for the record?
No. My name is Dan, D-A-N, Connors, C-O-N-N-O-R-S.
Okay. And the first speaker? I'm sorry, we didn't catch your, your name either. The first speaker.
David Connors.
David Connors.
You have 2 minutes and 40 seconds left.
Sir, were you sworn in with the rest of the group?
Yes. My name is Bart Gary. If I may have one moment to put up one or two slides or... Hi, thank you for your time. I am Bart Gary. My wife and I lived in Edenton for about three years. I wanted to speak with you today, not so much about the zoning issues involved in this, but about two other very large issues that I think need to be addressed. And first is the tree ordinance issue. Cobb County has a tree ordinance, and y'all, I'm sure, are all familiar with it. And it's a very good tree ordinance, and the Cobb County recognizes that trees have beneficial purposes, unlike our association, that they create photosynthesis, convert carbon dioxide to oxygen and other things. But the most important take on this is that the tree ordinance is incorporated into the RAM disturbance permits that were, this was built by. This was approved by the county, showing in front of each house a four-inch diameter red maple tree, and that's what I, what they had when I moved in. So it's not just a matter of zoning, it's also the, the zoning ordinance, the tree ordinance and the site permit. And as, as David said, the tree ordinance states that a tree has to be two-inch in diameter, not one, but two inches. What they're replacing it with is not even a tree. Now, the other issue that I want to talk about is the fact that the zoning conditions approved in 2015 were recorded on the subdivision plat for this subdivision. I've got it up there on the screen, verbatim, they were recorded, they weren't recorded one or two times, but a total of nine times. And this particular one that you see on the screen was incorporated into my warranty deed when I bought the property. I relied on these terms, conditions, including the four-inch diameter tree, when I bought. It was there when I moved into the house. And the, the, these plats constitute covenants between people who bought property. It says that they are binding upon the property as well as a part of the zoning conditions. These are private contracts among all the people that can only be changed by the people in the subdivision, not this board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our opposition. John, what is staff's recommendation?
Madam Chairman and Board, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request to stipulation 27D to allow a one-inch caliper tree, and number two, all previous conditions to remain in effect.
Thank you. I'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Thank you. Okay. I think what we have here is a neighborhood HOA dispute amongst the neighbors in Edenton. There are 26 homes, and I do have a survey or with several options on there that went out to the HOA from Mr. Beecham, the president, in, on October 20, October 10, 2022. I think it had four options, and, I'm sorry, it went out from Carol Sears, the Secretary Vice President of Edenton. The email was from Mr. Beecham, I believe. I think we all know that this subdivision was zoned in 2015, so it hasn't, I guess the last, I don't know when, what year the last home was built, but the trees that were planted per STIP from, the STIP letter from Mr. Moore dated June 2, 2015, does say that each unit in the development shall have at least one hardwood tree planted in the front yard, a minimum of four-inch caliper. That's the reason we're here today, because of another business, to remove a STIP. The, the, the HOA also has covenants now that were turned over from the developer to the, to form an HOA as part of the zoning. We all know that HOA covenants can be more restrictive than Cobb County Code, but they can't be less restrictive. And we don't enforce covenants, correct? We, we can't enforce covenants. So I think I have a solution that may be beneficial to both sides here today, and what I'd like to do is number STIP from Mr. Moore's STIP letter of June 2, 2015, the zoning case was Z57. Page six, and I will give this to the clerk for reference. Page six, number 27D, I would like to replace that, and Mr. County Attorney, please let me know if this is accurate or acceptable. I'd like to replace that with each unit in the development shall have at least one hardwood tree planted in the front yard up to a four-inch caliper. And you can refer to your covenants and your 51% vote, or whatever your covenants say, to determine who's keeping their four-inch caliber and who's replacing with one-inch And that would be my motion to, to adjust that, to replace 27D with that language. Is that acceptable, Mr. County Attorney?
As I understand it, the, the, the Homeowners Association itself said they were going to do a minimum of at least one inch. You've just, you've eliminated the, the one-inch requirement by what you've just said.
Up to four inch.
Up to four inch, but they said they were going to do a minimum of at least one inch. Up to four inch, but they said they were going to do a minimum of at least one inch. So you've eliminated the one-inch requirement by what you just said.
Well, up to four inch could be a one-inch.
It could be, or it could be smaller. I just want to make sure you understand that. So, the Homeowner Association said they were going to do a minimum of one inch.
Okay, so amend it to say at least one hardwood tree planted in the front yard of one-inch to four-inch caliber. And they can work it out within their covenants. Because John Peterson and I did go out there and looked at the trees, and we've gotten several emails in favor of and opposed. The survey that went out, according to the email I received, there were, of the 26 homes, there were 20 that voted for the option of replacing with the one-inch caliber. There were five, I think, that opposed it, and one wanted a dogwood tree. So, I mean, I'd rather they duke it out and not bring it here, but because it's a stip, we have to hear it under other business. So I also was told by Mr. Beecham that there was a petition. I haven't seen it. I don't know if it was submitted for the record. I haven't seen it. And, I mean, I just have the synopsis of, or the summary of who voted for what. So the covenants say that 51% have to approve something. I don't want to get into the middle of covenants. And Jessica, you can maybe help me out here, because it's really up to them to decide as long as it's not less restrictive than our code.
Our community development director's name is Jessica Gwynne, who's up here nodding her head. Just want to get that on the record since those viewing can't see.
I'll just come speak to that. Yes, Commissioner, you're right, Jessica Gwynne, Cobb County Community Development Director. You're absolutely correct. And I think that the language that's proposed, one inch to four inches, would give the neighbors the opportunity to work that out amongst the HOA and within their covenants and, you know, would resolve the issue of the stipulation.
So that's my motion, unless y'all have any...
Okay.
Oh, you have a question?
Jessica.
So, part of my concern with this application is, again, our arborist reviewed this tree for this lot and approved it. So would the arborists have to approve any changes that they would be making to trees that would go in this development?
Well, ultimately, this would be something that was done as a stipulation. So, you know, I would think submit what's being proposed so that we can ensure that it's in line with the, whatever the new condition, the new stipulation is. So if they could submit that so that we can see what's being proposed and the arborists can agree that, yes, this is consistent with the stipulation that, as it's modified.
Okay. So, did you have a follow-up?
What they have met with landscape companies, Gibbs and Pike's.
Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner Gamble, to your comment?
Okay. Just making sure that the four-inch max doesn't impact any other tree planting in case there are other larger trees that might, in the future, want to be planted. This is only for the, in front of the house stip, correct?
Right. It says in front yard. They've already addressed the ones in the rear, in the back. That was another, other business last year, or a couple of years ago.
Commissioner Gamble?
My only other concern goes back to these invoices that they submitted to support their position. For example, their planting services on the bill that's over $90,000. The planning service for that one is $46,800. Where on the other one, which is for just over $14,000, is only $3,120. I'm not quite sure why the big difference if they're just planting the same number of trees. I also find it interesting, well, but to me, this is being used as evidence to justify going down to a smaller caliber tree. My other issue is the planning mix. On the cheaper invoice, they're just saying 26, so one for each tree, but on the more expensive one, it's $100. So again, this is being used to justify an action, but we're not comparing apples to apples between the two invoices. So I have, I have concerns about that if this is being used to justify us reducing the caliber when, again, the arborist originally had approved this specific tree for this specific development, knowing that it would thrive and be appropriate for the area and the conditions it would be within.
Well, it's my understanding that not all of the trees, if there's 26 units and there's a tree, four-inch caliber, in the front yard of each, of each lot, they're not all needing to be replaced. That invoice would be to replace all 26 at one time, or maybe as needed, I don't know. But the pictures that you saw of the four-inch caliber in bloom, if there's no damage to them and they're not, the roots aren't in the sewer or electrical or cable, and they don't want to replace them, and there's no need to replace them, I wouldn't think they would have to. But again, if they want to assess the homeowners, the $90,000 or the $14,000, that's, that's their business, that's their covenants. I'm not here to dictate that. So I have a motion and...
More discussion?
I just had a couple of follow-up questions for the applicant, just some clarification.
The attorney?
Yeah, the attorney.
Mr. Dodson?
There was testimony with respect to the height of the trees. What is the height of the current trees at the property?
Let me pull it back up. I'm not sure of the exact height. I mean, I'm sure, I mean, they've had several years of growth on them, but frankly, not every tree that's there is four inches now. There are some that have a smaller caliper than four inches.
But with respect to the height, specifically?
Yes, but the height, ma'am, I, Commissioner, I'm not sure. This is one example that I'm showing here. That's gotta be, it's up to the, it's above the gutter line, so it's, that's probably 20 feet tall, I'm sure.
Okay. And would you say that that tree would be taller than the proposed Japanese maple? There was a slide where there was a gentleman that was standing.
Most certainly, yes, ma'am.
Would you know what the mature height would be for the Japanese maple?
The mature height, I believe, is up to 20 feet. This is not a ornamental Japanese maple that is a low-hanging tree. This is a taller version of a Japanese maple. But again, it's the root structure. This tree here that's currently planted, yeah, it's a great tall tree and it's columnar, but the root structure's not. And that's, that's the purpose here. Now, there was some discussion about this is covenants and things like that. Well, yes, there are covenants in this community, but the requirement of four inches came as a stipulation of a rezoning, of a rezoning. It's a zoning condition. Again, staff has indicated that that wasn't even necessary at the time. That the trees, the number of trees didn't even matter, and they planted four times, that was even the requirement then. But those trees are owned by the association, not the individual homeowner.
Okay, thank you.
And it's the HOA's obligation to maintain them.
Okay. And just one other question. With the Japanese maple, is there such thing as a two-inch or three-inch caliber?
There are, yes, Commissioner, there are one-inch, two-inch, three-inch, four-inch. There's six-inch, there's eight-inch. There, the basis for going with the one-inch is that, one, it will grow, and two is the price. You go over a one-inch caliper tree, you get into getting two-inch caliper trees. They don't come in a black pot, a plastic pot. They come in a burlap sack, root ball structure, which is much larger, requires more equipment to plant. In fact, on a four-inch, you have to have a machine to dig out, unless you want to pay laborers hours and hours to dig big holes to put these in. But it's based on the root ball. These are just much bigger trees. They're hardier trees, they've grown longer, and it's a cost issue, is what it is. And that's a cost that will be passed on to each individual homeowner, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to just kind of follow up on that, because even though while the cost to install the tree will be less because it's a smaller caliper, in the end, the tree is still going to get to the same mature height, which means the diameter's going to expand, which means the root system is going to expand. So again, you're still sitting here with the potential same problems that they're saying the existing trees are causing today.
Is, may I respond?
Sure.
The root structure on a Japanese maple is not an invasive root structure. That is why the arborist, that is why the landscaping company, that's why the management company have recommended using a Japanese maple, because the root structure does not go out, it goes down.
Jessica, we don't have anyone from David or anyone here to answer these questions.
No, we don't, but I will speak anecdotally, at least, to a previous jurisdiction I worked in. We actually had a similar neighborhood right behind our office, where it was very small lots, and they had a similar tree. And it was an issue, whereas the trees continued to grow, they did start to cause some cracking in the driveways and sidewalks. And that neighborhood also came and made a similar request to have those trees replaced.
Okay, I'm going to put you on the spot. So if we know this, then why are we using this in part of our development standards that are approved, that then the developers put in, that then down the road cause homeowners' future issues?
As we know, of course, right now, I think, as we're looking at our codes, we do need to take a better look at the landscaping requirements. And that is one of the things that we're asking our consultants to take a look at. In 2015, you know, this was done in 2015. And just like whenever you look at other developments that were done earlier on, the types of landscape materials that were proposed may have been different than they would be today as we know more about how those materials grow. I mean, you think about, like, for instance, Bradford Pairs, where we just don't use the same landscaping materials. So I think that we would want to take another look at what would be appropriate, but I can't speak to why that determination was made in 2015 for that particular tree.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you. Commissioner Burl had a motion put forward, and then there was discussion prior to the second. So I will second your motion to see if there's any additional discussion on this matter. I'll share, I'm supportive of your motion. I think it's balanced, and it allows the HOA to address the details of cost and to address what I perceive are reasonable arguments on both sides. I believe that there's, you know, valid issues regarding noise, abatement, privacy and view. And I think there's also concern with respect to size and disruption to pipe systems, which I have dealt with with other townhome communities. And this is particularly dating to construction in the mid-2000s that had a different material for pipes than was used today. I don't know the veracity of that today, which again gets back to the reasonability of the arguments. On the other side, is this a ripe concern? Has there been actual damage yet before you bring this forward? And so in balancing those issues, I support your motion wholeheartedly, Commissioner.
Okay. One, one other thing I think I need to add, if I may amend. We're going to say up from one inch to four inch at time of planting. Because the four-inch that were planted already may stay. Is that it?
I agree with that. But again, if we're concerned about the trees impacting the sewer system and the water lines that are in there, should the, there be a requirement that they have to make sure that these plants, when planted, will not impact the infrastructure that is currently there? They know where that is. I mean, that's platted on these homes. So, and I would hope, again, when these trees were originally planted, we didn't plant them in an area where we knew, you know, a utility line was there. So are you going to then have them clarify that so we don't have this come back again?
I would be amenable to that kind of additional language only because I know the arborists, when they review it, they're going to ensure it matches the stips. So if we want to make the consideration that the roots can affect the foundation, something to that, for future tree things?
Well, they will, I mean, it would be up to them if they see the roots interfering with the sewer or whatever, that's when that would be replaced, with a one-inch or a two-inch or a three-inch or whatever.
Well, I'm not sure how you would manage where the roots would grow. And I think part of the reason, the desire is to have the Japanese maple is because it grows down, the roots grow down versus the oak trees and maple trees, which spread out.
Okay, well, I'm just going to leave it with one-inch to up to four-inch caliper, and they decide.
Again, I support that with the amount of attention put on this. I think there's been a lot of research that residents have provided. In a sense, they have some awareness to be able to, in essence, assume the risk based on what's being put before us today. So again, I'm supportive of your motion. And I'm very concerned about us getting, for lack of pun intended, getting into the weeds.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion. In a second, I'll call the question. Okay, the vote passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I believe we have one more, John.
Last one.
We'll wait until they, was there a number of people associated with OB-10?
You go ahead and call him up here. I guess he knows who he is. We got to keep that as part of the record. Uh-huh. It's the record. That's part of the record. You submitted it. It's got to stay, and I'm sorry.
Want to approve the site plan, approve the conditions? So I was going to do approval, the site plan subject to these six conditions, maximize size 5,000 square feet, so right now it's 6,000. Cod EOT comment, fire form comments, prohibition, the requirement that you say include drugstore, hardware store, grocery store, store. To allow permission.
Okay, so when I make my motion, then I need to leave out this BOC approval of the farm site? Just deny?
All right, John.
Okay, last item on today's agenda is other business item number 12 of 2023, which is to consider approval of plans for Arpit Kumar Patel regarding resuming application Z156 of 2000 located in Landlots 274 and 303 of the 17th District. Property is located at the southwest intersection of Wendy Hill Road and Benson Pool Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 12? Four? Okay, let's record show there's four people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and all the Commissioners and staff. My name is Arpit Patel. I'm the resident of Cobb County, Georgia. And I'm also the owner of this property and trying to develop the property as a pack-a-store with a total size of 5950 square feet. 4950 will be pack-a-store and 1,000 retail space with 31 parking spaces. The hours of operation that I'm proposing will be 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:45 p.m. on Friday, Saturday, and 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sundays.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we'll hear from opposition at this time. We have 10 minutes in total.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and council members. My name's Attorney Michael Edmonds. I'm a local attorney and a Cobb County resident. After 24 years of, of lawyering, and this is my first time having people come to me and ask them to be represented at, at a meeting like this, so excuse me if I misspeak, but this is Mr. Hardaway. He's a resident that lives two doors down from the proposed liquor store location. He lives at 456 Wendy Hill Road. It's his own LRC right now. That's a low intensity business location. So hearing, hearing some other arguments today, I've, I've been able to discern the difference between a high intensity and a low intensity location. This location is right in the middle of a lot of houses. It's right across from Smyrna Grove, which is a, is an upscale neighborhood. I think that a liquor store going in at this location will feed into some of the fears that we have as Cobb County residents, including panhandling, troublemakers. We're, we're looking at an uptick in, in crime because of a liquor store being at that location. This, this property, I think, was rezoned way back in the year 2000. We were able to get some notations on what that property was proposed to be at that time, and there were a lot of issues that were brought up by the DOT in 2000. There are minimum separation distances from the right turn lane from Wendy Hill. There's a big sight distance issue at this location. There is existing drives on Wendy Hill that don't comply with Cobb County developmental standards. There's a center of turn lane issue at Wendy Hill. There was a recommendation by DOT at that time that the person applying for a zone variance enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of improvements for traffic concerns, donation of roadway on the south side of Wendy Hill, center lines. There's, they, they recommended the installation of a sidewalk on Benson Pool and Wendy Hill roads. It, it seems to me that this was already kind of a difficult issue 23 years ago, and it seems like, we, we would argue that it's the same today. That it's a, a tricky little intersection where the, the sight distance really doesn't allow for people to slow down and allow traffic in and out of that location without a significant amount of structural changes to the roadway. Mr. Hardaway, like I said, lives a couple doors down. I think that he wanted to address everyone with concerns that he has.
How everybody doing?
State your name again for the record.
My name is Jamon Hardaway. Okay, I have two little bit of kids. I'm a father. I got one that's 10 and one that's 12. All right. Traffic right there at my house is terrible, terrible, all day, all night. That's all you hear is cars up and down, up and down, zoom, zoom. Three, four o'clock in the morning, early in the morning, at, at, at eight o'clock in the morning, 10 o'clock in the morning. Cars is bagged up a miles down the road from my house. You can't even get out my driveway. Excuse me. You can't even get out my driveway. It, it's just, it's terrible. And with him bringing this liquor store over here, man, we got crime everywhere over there at my, my house. We got heroin addicts, crackheads, alcoholics. We can't have this right here. This is, this is a nice place. Wendy Hill is a nice place. We're not trying to turn this into bankhead. This is, this ain't bankhead, this ain't sell some. Please take that back to your neighborhood, sir. We don't need it. We got liquor stores over there that ain't really being used. Cars crashing into the liquor stores, breaking down them. Every time you turn around, a car don't ran into the liquor store at the street. What we need with that? And then on top of it, it has to be a certain, a certain amount of space in between a liquor store and a resident. Man, you talking about do what he trying to do? Ain't never 50 feet away from my front door. We can't, I'm a pay, I'm a taxpaying citizen. You understand, I'm sure everybody else is. I got a little bit of kids. That ain't what I'm trying to raise up. I ain't trying to raise them up to look at no liquor store every day, all day long. They can't even play in their yard as it is. So you understand, we vote no for that right there. We don't need that. Take that back to wherever you at. We don't need it. That's all I got to say.
Following up on that, there are three or four liquor stores within a two mile radius of this location. Obviously, at this type of zoning request, there, there's no requirement to show that there needs to be a 300-foot buffer zone between the front of a liquor store and a residence. That would be something that would be addressed at a liquor license application. But our concern is that if the commission authorizes the change to zone for a liquor store, that the argument is going to be that the commissioners have already approved this as a liquor store and paving the way for business development or the liquor licensing commission to, to go ahead and roll with what the commission has already decided. So that's why we're here today to, to argue against rezoning for placing of a liquor store. And I, I don't think we have anything further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? John, what is staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, I'm glad that Cornelia's left the, the site plan up on the screen to view because this is an approval of the plans per the zoning conditions. The zoning staff and DOT staff definitely have concerns about this due to the size, shape of the property and due to its access on Benson Pool Road. So the staff would recommend the board approve the request subject to a maximum building size of 5,000 square feet, subject to Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet, which includes no access to Benson Pool Road, subject to the Fire Department comments contained in the other business packet. Prohibited uses to include drugstores, hardware stores, grocery stores, and liquor stores. Permitted uses shall include also professional offices. All previous conditions not in conflict to remain. And District Commissioner to approve the final site plan and architectural plan.
Thank you, John. Can you repeat those restricted uses again?
Yeah, the, the staff's recommending that the board prohibit the following uses: drugstore, hardware store, grocery store, and liquor store. And the staff has recommended we prohibit those because the property is so small, it really cannot support a high intensity use that generates a lot of traffic. But we are including to allow them to use the property for professional offices also, which is a low intensity use.
John, I'm having difficulty pulling up the LRC zoning code. Is this for LR, is this is home for LRC or?
It's zoned LRC.
Yes. Is a gas station permitted in a LRC?
A, a convenience store or fuel cell is not permitted in LRC.
Okay. And this is not a rezoning?
This is not a rezoning.
Okay. Excuse me, Commissioner, for asking all those clarifying questions. I should have turned it over to you first. You can go ahead.
Thank you, John. I did have a couple of questions for the applicant, if he can approach. In reviewing this site plan, there are properties to the south of the subject parcel, and I understand that a couple of those parcels are zoned commercial. But have you done any research with respect to the distance of the closest residential property line? It was shared in testimony that a resident is within 50 feet of this location, but have you done any research regarding the closest residential property?
No, ma'am.
You have not? Okay. The other question that I have for the retail space of 1,000 feet, what type of retail did you propose or plan for, for that space?
It's just a tenant space, not decided yet. It's just a tenant space, not to be decided.
Okay. So at this point, you don't have a, an user?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Those are the only questions that I have for the applicant. I'm not sure if you guys had any? No? Oh, go ahead. The proposed retail use, would that have to come back for District Commissioner approval? Wants this determined?
Yeah.
And, and is that included in the prohibited uses that John mentioned for LRC?
Well, just those four retail uses I mentioned, drugstore, grocery store, hardware store, liquor store are prohibited.
But, but her question is would the retail portion have to come back? But your intent is for the entire use, whether it's retail or for the entire building?
The, the way, the way that, that I proposed it, it would not come back. If the board wanted to put a condition on there, then it comes back, and that's what the condition would be.
Yeah, I actually have that. Yeah, for the entire space?
The entire space.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yeah?
Just with the LRC code, it has a number of uses. And I know John has struck out or removed four of those uses, but it's unclear what the applicant's intent is if he doesn't get the liquor store. You know, do you want to, are you amenable to the other ranges of uses in the LRC code?
Yeah, and there at least over two dozen LRC uses, so I plan to address that by having it to come back for DC approval. Thank you for hanging with us, Mr. Patel. And, and the opposition, thank you so much for your attendance today. So as mentioned, the LRC category is intended for low, low, low use, low intensity use. And this parcel, and actually I had a question for DOT, but I, I don't think I need to ask it at this point. This parcel was zoned 23 years ago with LRC, but it, it sits on a very busy corner of intersection of Wendy Hill and Benson Pool Road. It's very, to the signalized intersection of Benson Pool and Wendy Hill, which is very concerning. As been mentioned by the staff and staff recommendations, this type of use will generate quite a bit of, of traffic. And based on DOT's comments, they're averaging daily trips to be 35,000, a little over 35,000 daily. That's very intense and very significant. But absent a traffic study, which we don't have at this point, DOT estimates 531 vehicles per day to the liquor store and 54 vehicles per day to the retail store, which will total 585, roughly 585 vehicles per day at that location. DOT also recommended that there will be no access on Benson Pool Road, which leaves the only ingress and egress off of the very busy and well-traveled Wendy Hill Road. Your proposed business is permitted within the LRC, but it, it is again a highly intensive use for the location and would generate a high degree of traffic and traffic concerns. It, it is my hope that you will find a less intensive use for the property that will satisfy the safety concerns, not just for the drivers, but also for the neighboring community at Smyrna Grove and those that live in close proximity of, of this establishment or this proposed business. I do support staff recommendation. I would like to add another prohibited use to that list for the clerk, and that will be for any smoke or vape shops. And that the final use, let, let me just go ahead and make the motion. I make a motion to approve OB 122023 based, subject to the conditions that, that's already been read into the record, to include a prohibited use of smoke and vape shops, with the final use to be approved by the District Commissioner. And that concludes my motion.
Thank you. And those prohibited uses also include the prohibited uses that John read into the record.
Specifically, yeah.
Okay, and you're just adding one. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. John, I believe this concludes our agenda. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.